Good evening and welcome to the March 7, 2018 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from February 21st. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of February 21st, 2018. As read in the record.
Second?
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
One abstention.
One abstention, so four, zero, one. That takes us to our first application tonight, which is for sign permit, sign dash one five eight six four dash 2018 at 106 North Frederick Avenue, Herbology, a 62.67 square foot monument sign in the CD corridor of Goldman's Zone. And presented from staff, this is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening Jasmine.
Good evening. Staff is before you this evening to present signed application for the Herbology at 106 North Frederick Avenue. The applicant is requesting approval for a 62.67 square foot internally illuminated monument sign located in the public right of way. This plan comes for the planning commission because an applicant is requesting a sign adjustment pursuant to section 24 dash two one three AF, which permits the planning commission to grant adjustments to any portion of the sign ordinance. The sign adjustment request is permit the sign to be located within the public right of way and staff wants to note that a staff approval, AFP dash seven six six four dash nine seventeen was approved for exterior renovations and that also included minor site improvements. So when we were reviewing this, the plans, we also did notice, if you look at the image here, this is what the property line of the owner used to look like. So staff have requested that the applicant to dedicate 604 square feet of right of way along North Frederick Avenue and the record plat was approved by planning commission of January 3rd of 2018. As you see here, so this is what the, after prepping the plats, this is what the property line looks like now. So you can see the sign is right outside of the property line. So I have Andy Cohen, who's one of the owners from Herbology, is going to go over the application this evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, thanks for having me. So I think this is hopefully relatively simple. We are just looking to put a monument sign in that right of way. We have received approval from the, I guess it's the Department of Highway to do so. It's an act, the sign is actually in the same spot as the old sign used to be for the dry cleaner that was there for many years. All the sign codes have been followed regarding size, lettering, illumination, all that stuff. So again, we're really only requesting the ability to put a new sign where the old one was. We realize it is a right of way. We've gotten the approval on that and that's, you know, pretty much it.
And Jasmine, as far as we know, there were no complaints or issues with the old sign being where it was. So for those years that the dry cleaner had their sign as it was?
We asked, staff has also contacted Alimah, or actually Michael Johnson, to review the sign per application. He has no objections to the location of the sign.
Great, sight lines and things like that.
Yep, it's North Frederick Avenue. Coming out that way is one way, so they're only looking to the left when they exit off the property.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, one of the conditions is the parking space striping. Can you explain that a little bit?
So right now, since they're, if you can see here, they're placing the sign in front of a parking space, they're going to have to extend the striping a little bit further back.
So it doesn't eliminate any spaces or anything like that? Okay.
Just one other technicality, if before the dedication, you know, the new tenant had moved into the building and changed the sign face, there would have been no real question about refacing or replacing the sign that's there, but subsequent to dedicating the, or replating based on the need to dedicate the frontage to the state highway?
Yeah.
That created the condition where then it was outside the, is that fair?
Yeah, that's correct.
Plus, I believe it wasn't the code, right? The old sign was out of code?
Yeah, it was a number.
They would have had to bring it down to the size that they have now. The height was.
Right, but it would have complied with the sign ordinance and it's, you know, theoretically, they sort of plotted themselves out of being able to have a sign.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone here in the audience that wants to comment on this application? All right, nobody rushed the podium, so Jasmine, what's the recommendation, please?
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report, staff findings and recommendation and applicant's testimony grant sign dash one five eight six four dash 2018. Herbology finding them in performance with section 24 dash two twelve of the CD code with four conditions.
Great. Any questions on the recommendation, concerns?
No.
Pretty straightforward application. I think it's certainly in keeping and love that it meets the corridor sign package. It's really great.
I'm glad that that space is being reused. It's a good thing.
Absolutely. All right, any other concerns? If not, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report, staff findings and recommendations and the applicant's testimony grant sign one five eight six four dash two zero one eight. Herbology finding them in conformance with section 24 two one two of the CD code with the four conditions as presented this evening.
Second?
It's moved in the second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, you know, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks for moving into the city and continuing our small business traditions. Let me double check here. Okay, so we're up on us, the next item, which is site plan. Site plans first is AFP dash seven eight one two dash 2018 at 16 South Summit Avenue and this is to renovate the existing building and site for Gaithersburg, new Gaithersburg Police Station in the CBD Central Business District Zone. This is a final site plan presented from staff is Greg Mann. Good evening Greg.
Good evening. This is for application AFP dash seven eight one two dash 2018. Requesting approval to renovate the existing office building and site located at 16 South Summit Avenue, facilitate the city's new police station and future city council chambers. In addition to the interior and architectural renovations, proposed amendment includes a new Sallyport, two new vestibules, a new 2,185 square foot outbuilding, generator and transformer enclosures, new landscaping and fencing and updates to the existing parking lot. The application also requesting approval of a parking waiver to reduce the drive aisle width from 26 feet to 24 feet in select locations. Such a property is located within the Old Town District at the corner of Old Town and South Summit Avenues and the property is currently in the CBD. And here tonight to present the application, to answer any questions may have, is the applicant's architect, David Schrader from the Schrader Group.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. So we also have obviously Dennis Enslinger from the city and Chief Sroka. They are the, will be the users of the building obviously and then we have Steve McKelmit from MK Consulting Engineers. He's the civil and landscape architect for the project, so he'd be here to answer any specific questions. So we're excited about the opportunity to bring another civic presence to the building that currently is being used as a commercial facility and so we wanted to give you a little presentation of the existing conditions proposed and give you a sense of the architecture as well. So to start with, the existing conditions, the current site that Greg noted here is bound by South Summit Avenue on the right on the drawing, Old Town Avenue to the north and then Folks Corner Avenue in the back or the west side and we are directly across from the current council chambers that we're sitting in right now. To the south is the St. Martin's Building as well as a small commercial property, to the north, mixed commercial and residential and then directly behind the existing site is the current police department. So that's the facility that you see in the little cutout in the backside of the site. Site currently consists of 195 parking spaces with a building of approximately 48,000 square feet in three stories. So that's the existing conditions and we, with the general concept here, we tried to respect as much as we could all of the architecture and site planning design along Old Town Avenue and South Summit Avenue. So you'll see that we try to preserve much of what you're currently seeing in the aerial photograph here. We try to preserve as much of the parking area that you see in that current area as possible while still taking care of the secure parking. That's important to a police station and that's what's going to be in the plan that you see. And then the architecture presented by the building, we've respected that as much as possible as well and you'll see how we try to develop that through the concept. So a police station in general, and since the majority of this building will be converted to police station with also a portion of the ground floor being city, mayor and city council chambers, so you'll have two kind of public functions on the ground floor. The interesting thing about police stations is the most important part is, or one of the most important parts, is the processing area, secure Sallyport and vestibules that go along with that because they have to be directly accessible from vehicles. So that's the first part of a challenge of setting up a site where you have to create kind of a secure area on the site and then a less secure area on the site which can become traditional public parking, public access. And so as we looked at the site in general, the south portion of the site, which consists of one of the access, or one of the current access points from South Summit Avenue, became kind of that string through the site that becomes our secure parking area and the goal was to retain the Folks Corner Avenue entry as well as the Old Town Ave entry as two of the access points that could be used by whatever the future use is from a public standpoint. And we've yet to determine how all of the parking is to be used in the balance of the property. But the intent though is to get 20 secure parking spaces in, within a fenced area on the south side of this site and let the business of the building be handled in that area. The balance of the site would appear much as it currently does and that you'd have the large parking area and then access point to the back of the building, which now becomes in essence the parking front of the building. So we tried to retain that passage through the building on the ground floor that goes from the corner of Old Town Avenue to, and South Summit, back into the parking lot by creating a very nice pedestrian passageway through the building. It's a secure pedestrian passage, but it still maintains that access point from front to back and you, we can certainly look at the floor plans at some point if it helps. However, the top part of the drawing here, the north part of the building itself will be the mayor and city council chambers in a community space. And then the south part of the building will become all of the business end of the police station. And so that's how we decided where the Sallyport addition would go and you'll see as we get a little bit further into the development of that back plaza, the emergency generator became a major component of the site that we had to work with. So that's one of the other challenges that came along with this. And probably the last piece of the, the development of the site that, that came into play were there were certain elements of the building or of the police use that did not necessarily want to go into the larger capacity of the building and those became some small police outbuilding components, things like larger evidence bulk storage, bicycle storage and things like that that the police officers use. So that's what goes into this new police outbuilding on the south side of the site, the southwestern side. So starting with that, in essence, we've got the development of the, the entire site from a landscape perspective, again respecting all of that brickwork and concrete that's been used throughout the South Summit and Old Town areas. There's an existing planting bed to the north of the building that we replant and we also try to use that as one of the emergency egress points from one of the larger spaces in the building and we do end up building an additional small brick wall that's just in the character of all the brick walls around the building and then landscape along that edge as well. Further at the western side of the building, we continue with the plantings and there is a small egress point from the city council chambers from that point as well and we have a lot of low vegetation and flowering things along that side, flowering landscaping. So the larger of the components at the back corner here was the challenge of trying to create a real nice entry plaza for the folks who do come in from the parking side and in essence that's going to become the larger access point for the city council chambers, but there's also a police department access point from that side as well. Interestingly, there's a drop from the landing of the building down to the parking lot of between 18 and 22 inches and so it gave us an opportunity to take the plaza and kind of slope it off and create seating benches around the edge here to create a nice integrated seating area with those planting areas and still creating all of the access that we need for the ADA purposes. Some of the other components in the parking lot, we have bio retention swells in several locations, these two larger areas here, so they're very well planted beds and also low landscaping and flowering in those areas. And then we have, because of the, the fact that the building is a lead silver building, we have our charging stations, stations and our low emissions vehicle at parking areas. We also have the four motorcycle parking areas and then we have bicycle parking along the edge of the building here. And I will get a little bit further into the plaza design here as well. We maintain a lot of the existing landscaping along the northwest corner of the site and then do additional low plantings along the parking spaces all around and then at all of the parking islands, we go ahead and install shade trees as well. Do some additional shading along the south side of the site, additional plantings against the small commercial property and along St. Martin's property. So we do have two things that we'll be talking about. We have the variance for the parking drive aisles. We were trying to maintain the current parking island areas and the width of the parking island areas, or the depths I should say, and those are currently at 24 feet in many cases and so that's the request for the variance to go from 26 to 24, maintaining those drive aisles that we currently have. We also through the secure area, this is really intended to be a single vehicle movement at any one point and it's really set up to be a one-way in and out for the police. However, the police will use that area in any way that they need to, to egress the site quickly.
Anywhere they want.
Yes, we agree. So, so it is also a 24-foot drive aisle and it's also kind of a secondary parking area so it's something that we feel that with that 24-foot, were appropriately scaled for that parking aisle as well. So the variances for the general parking areas to go from the 26 to the 24 feet. Should also mention that city council will have to consider a waiver for setback for the police building. We currently, within the 15-foot setback, we're 11 feet from the property line at one corner and just so you know that that's one other condition of the site. So I'm going to move into the plaza plan, which will let me get into the Sallyport.
Can I, one quick question, please, on, on this plan? So two things, how is the secured parking secured? What's the nature of the fence or the barrier or the change?
Good, thank you.
And, and if you're, if you're parked in the public side of that, right, can you still walk around the south side of the building to get, say, to city hall across the street? I mean, that parking lot ends up getting used or at least traditionally as some public parking for festivals at city hall, things like that and the, the obvious way to walk is around the south end. So do you maintain a pedestrian connection there or does that end up getting cut off because of the secured?
We do not. That gets cut off. And, and, but you bring up the balance of points here. We do have a slide that includes the fencing. You will have to, if you park in this area to go to the existing city hall, you will have to go to the north around Old Town, pardon, Old Town Avenue. There's also a chance that you could walk through the center of the building, however, I think the balance of folks would try to go to the north to Old Town Avenue. The fencing conditions, we have a, an architectural metal fence that cuts across from this generator enclosure that I'll get into further, around the parking area to the backside over by the police station and that's an architectural metal fence. That same fence is used along South Summit Avenue and then cuts in along our property line back to the first new inclusion of landscaping and from that point back, it's a metal post with a wood fence along the St. Martin's and the commercial property. We have an image for you to see that and that was reviewed by HDC. They offered an alternative and we went ahead and turned, rotated the wood battens in that to, to match their desire. So the other part of that related to the passage or not passage through this area is this area along the parking lot is constricted by a sliding gate with secure access for the police only, hard access use and the area right against South Summit Avenue also has a sliding secure gate and so those are both important to this concept. So just to slide in a little bit further, if you were to look at kind of the, the bulk of what we're doing to the exterior of this building, one of the, the biggest challenges and won't get into the detail of all of the utilities that happen to run through this area as well as the easements that we need for the various sewer and sanitary and so on that runs through this part of the property, but we had to somehow get a generator in an enclosure adjacent to an electrical room. And so what you're seeing is probably three to four months worth of back and forth about what the best aesthetic solution to a very large generator that has to run a 43,000 square foot building is. And ultimately, hopefully you see in the renderings that it's, it's been treated well aesthetically. But that is where the generator sits. It is about a 14-foot tall wall surrounding it with a, a metal louver that matches all of the metal on the building on the west face and access points within the hard secure portion of the site here. We also have, so, and by the way, that is not roofed, that area. The proposed Sallyport is a one-story structure and it's an internal garage system to allow people to be taken out of the police cars and into the holding areas. And just to kind of reiterate how the plaza works, from the handicap parking as well as the traditional parking areas, you would access the back of the plaza. The front portions of each of these are between 18 and 20 inches high and so they become seating areas. As you work your way up the plaza, the plaza rises to this back new Sallyport, or pardon me, new vestibule area to the back of the building and these disappear as you get to the top of that. There's a small sitting and picnic area adjacent to the generator enclosure, bicycle parking. And then the last part is this kind of angled portion just above the generator enclosure. That's the transformer for the building. So all of the electrical guts sit there. That transformer enclosure is the same fencing as all of the secure metal fencing that wraps the perimeter of the site. And we just have a couple of the architectural, or landscape architecture features shown there. You can see the intent of the bollards that actually run along the, the face of the plaza here, the bicycle racks, the skate deterrents on the, the top of these different plaza areas and then we're still developing the site furniture, but this is a, a first pass at the site furniture. Last part of the plaza, this will be mostly a concrete element, but it's kind of the flip of the front plaza in that it's more concrete with two waists of brick running each direction, so the brick is the smaller component than the front and a little bit lighter appearance than the front. And then this is the police entry right here, which is kind of an, intended to be an understated entry compared to the city council entry. The existing building is three stories composed of brick, precast concrete and aluminum panels and it is, it's a beautiful piece of architecture. It has, over the 20 years though, started to fade a little bit and some of the masonry could certainly use some, some restoration. And so that'll be one of the things that we do for the facade here. You'll see that all the components of the front entry are maintained in what we're going to show you in the renderings with some upgrading. We're going to end up pulling out all of the beds here and replanting all of them and you'll see the flagpoles and the building monument signs go in those areas. For the most part, this northern part of the property, about half of this wall stays with some maintenance work and then we build a new wall out about six to eight feet from that current wall. Actually, it's more like five feet from that current wall. And everything on the east facade is maintained basically as it is with the exception of our addition further down. Last note, the metal panels underneath all the windows are currently green and the window frames are green. Our intent, along with the replacement of all these windows, is actually to replace those in kind of an anodized aluminum, so it just kind of takes the building to the next stage and maybe a 21st century look to the building that's 20 years old. So you'll see that in the renderings. And just looking from the south side, this is the area of the property where the new addition will go, so we modify that area a little bit more than the entry that you just saw. And then lastly, the back from the parking area, what you'll see here is the development of the plaza area. You'll start to see how the generator and Sallyport work here and you'll see how the secure parking on the right-hand side works. Lastly, we do also install all new HVAC equipment on the roof as well as a new roof and so we put up a new roof enclosure around all of that so that the, I should say, a screening product around all of that and it'll be in the, the same character as all of the metal on the building. And so this is a rendered view of the proposed from the corner of South Summit and Old Town Road. It will be, all of the brick restoration will bring the brick back to this color. You'll see the, we'll also be restoring all the metal panels and the panels will be repainted in the same color to keep in keeping with the building across the street from it. You do though see light lines of anodized aluminum for the window systems so that we have the new aluminum window systems installed there. Architecturally, the only real difference to this facade will be the new enclosed vestibule entry on the northeast corner and we have the two monument signs, one for the city of Gaithersburg, one for city police and then the four flagpoles that'll go in there. You'll start to see in the next rendering, there are areas on the building facade with the window replacements where we do have elements of the building that are not conducive to windows, locker rooms and things like that. In some of those areas, we do have spandrel panel and you'll see how that works in the next, next rendering. So this is from the south side and this is where you start to see the addition. This is the secure Sallyport. You can start to see the garage doors, the sliding gate that we referenced earlier. We're trying to, to really keep with the, the lighting fixtures with a little bit more contemporary design for the lighting fixtures around the perimeter and probably the best scene here is along the locker rooms on the third floor. You can see how we're using spandrel to try to cut off the view of that area. The other area that we have to be careful of is this whole portion of the building in the lower left-hand corner is the holding cell area. And so that'll be masonry inside to create the hardened shell that we need and then it'll also be a spandrel panel exterior so that that'll match basically what's going on in the locker room areas. But we thought we'd show you the, the evening view so you get a sense of what areas might be light and what might not. The architectural rhythm that we set up with the Sallyport, instead of providing windows in there, we provided concrete panels or precast panels to match the precast and the balance of the building, but in the same rhythm as the windows. It's a garage, it's not an office building at that point, so our thought was it made more sense to, to provide precast there in that hardened area of the building. The other view is from the parking lot and the elements that you can see here include the new entry vestibule to the city council chambers. You can see the black fence outline that goes around the transformer enclosure and you can see how we treated the generator enclosure with the louver system that matches the roof screening product around all the HVAC equipment. Little tough to tell from the rendering that you're looking at, but the panels of this precast panel against the plaza, what we're trying to do with that is to provide a, a climbing wall there for landscaping and start to crawl up that facade and provide a little bit more green on that, that face. The proposed outbuilding is a very simplified version of that. It uses the same materials with a little bit of stucco thrown in, but the intent there is to provide a very simplified version of the main building with a pitched roof and metal, I should say metal pitched roof. The sides of the building will be a stucco product, the front will be the same brick and then cast stone base, but in a simplified format and you can start to see how the site fencing works along the secure area and then how the wood fencing will look along the back perimeter of the property. Facades, I think probably the perspectives show this a little bit better, but it starts to give you a sense of the replacement of the windows, the metal roof screening, the new South Summit Ave elevation with the Sallyport entry area and the view that most of us will never see here on the, the south portion of the site with the Sallyports within the secure parking area, at least we hope, and then the plaza entry area and the generator enclosure with the aluminum grid in front that matches the roof screening product. So we're trying to fit as much into the vernacular of the building as we can. This just gives you a sense of the outbuilding a little bit more with the stucco on the sides and back and then the brick on the front. We do have, and I probably should have pointed this out on the plan and I can certainly go back and do it if it helps, we do have a dumpster enclosure at the Folks Corner Ave side and that dumpster enclosure has the same architecture as the ancillary building. It's the cast stone base with the brick top and it's a very simplified version with just, without any kind of articulation architecturally. And the last part, we wanted to share with you the metal privacy fence that we're going to be using that will also be the sliding gates, that's on the left-hand side. On the right was the originally proposed metal post with wood fence infill along the back of the property line and as a result of the discussions we had with the historic district commission, we went ahead and put the new detail in, which is at the bottom, which is the wood run horizontally rather than vertically. And the intent there was that that matches the horizontal look of the metal privacy fence. The images here were just to show how we calculated the height of the roof screening. We picked a building and a quarter length away from any of those views to have a person stand along South Summit as well as the backside of Old Town Avenue and ran their view site from, or their view shed from there to determine how we could screen the HVAC equipment and so that's how you end up with the roof screening that we have and the height of the roof screening. I think that concludes the discussion, presentation.
All right. Jump in.
I've got a question about security.
Yes.
The south side, South Summit Avenue side, east facade, lower level. Are there plans for bollards or anything to prevent any cars from jumping the curb and going into the building from that particular perspective or from Old Town Avenue for that matter? Since it is a highly secured building in terms of what's in there, any, any protection, any plans for that?
Yeah, that's a good thought. So the, the first thing that we've done is the addition portion, and this is probably the less important portion in this discussion. The addition portion actually has the kennels and a storage area as a buffer between the two. So if a car ever jumped that, and on top of that, there's a planner in front of there as well. So we've kind of used some of the architectural elements and site elements to do that. So we've kind of used some of the architectural elements and site elements to do that. We are gonna maintain the tree structures along this facade on South Summit as a first deterrent. The second though is all of this area is concrete inside. And then on the front side of the building here, the administrative portion of the building, we actually have built in, and this is less of a car deterrent, more of a ballistic deterrent, we've got a Kevlar interior to that.
Oh, okay.
So the lower level of the whole first floor will have a Kevlar interior up to the glass area and the glass is above our heads, so we're not as concerned about the glass. So we have tried to deal with those kinds of elements at that level.
As well as on Old Town Avenue as well?
So Old Town Avenue is all civic. It is the city council chambers and the community room. So what we have there is the planter areas all along that facade. So the planters serve as that buffer from vehicles because they're about 30 inches tall. I know I'll get to it at some point here. Yeah, so all of these planters along that, yeah, it's moving on its own. Those are all vehicle buffers and they're also the landscapers.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just a quick, a couple of quick questions. Is the generator tank, is it underground or is it above ground?
Belly.
Belly?
Yes.
Okay, so that's...
So the height that we had to hide was generator plus belly?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And I know there's very secure areas for police, for like munitions and that kind of thing, that, so is that in that addition?
It's, part of that is in the addition, parts in the hardened portion of the building. So yes.
Okay, okay. Now, is this, is the building, is that portion, the police portion, is that gonna be 24 hours at this point?
The building's designed so that it can be 24 hours. I don't believe that they'll be staffing at 24 hours.
Okay.
It'll be the same hours of operation that we currently have.
So there's no change?
I believe 9:00 PM is when the last public, 9:00 PM is when the last public can go in the building. Again, there are always officers around.
Right.
Because we have officers on patrol.
And there's not an issue with parking in terms of like police vehicles? You know, because are there like additional, I mean, some of the bigger vehicles and that kind of thing?
We have taken into account those vehicles and some of the secured area will actually have accessories built, vehicles related to that. But the main big vehicle will actually be replaced in terms of trying to do the emergency operations center actually inside the building.
Okay, okay.
So the parking calculation for this site, what ultimately, I mean realistically, I know the cars are in and out, there's folks on patrol, there are officers on patrol. What's the, what's the impact of the public parking? Is any of that dedicated or expected to be supporting whatever vehicle fleet is associated with either the city or, you know, civic side or the police department?
Again, you know, I think part of the issue is this was built as an office building, so there theoretically wasn't any public parking for Old Town previously. I think we've had a series of events where the parking lot has been somewhat converted into public parking.
Yeah, fair enough.
For Old Town. They basically, instead of parking in the parking garage, now park on the city lot. That will have to have some discussion about how much is actually public parking. We have had some discussion about having some of the perimeter spaces, be limited time parking for the facility. But, you know, we do have that dynamic of the commuter, you know, the garage is built for the commuters to park in the garage, but you know, people take the least path of resistance. So if they can park on the ground, they're gonna park on the ground.
I'm thinking more like on an evening that the council's in session and we might have a large crowd for presentations and things, you know, they generate quite a bit of excitement sometimes. So that, the parking for that, would there be ample parking for that kind of activity that?
Yeah, I think the biggest would be shift change, which actually occurs during the day.
Yeah.
When we would have the most vehicles. Again, police operate it slightly differently in terms of their vehicle is their take-home vehicle. So it's not like they're bringing another vehicle and then taking a police vehicle out on the field. So really, it's just the shift change that there might be some issue with that. We believe we've accommodated enough space for that inside the control parking area and then outside the control parking area. You'll notice on the site plan, there are a number of spaces that are identified adjacent to that controlled area for police vehicles only. And we will continue to do the, kind of the drop-off where you can do your exchange if you did an online sale. There are two spaces for that, again, which we currently provide in that parking lot.
There was no discussion about like radio communications, bidirectional amplifiers. I mean, that will have to be integrated into that space as well.
We have taken care of all of that in the design in terms of meeting the police department's needs.
Okay. Any other questions? Would you pull up, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had a question regarding the architecture. In your addition, I can see that you're mimicking the top freeze of the building as your, as the cap of your addition. However, I'm wondering if you consider the precast freeze that continues throughout the entire facade as an element of tie-in in the design? I think that, you know, from aesthetic standpoint, I think it stands out as the addition. I think that it would be my preference if you considered the precast. And also, I think I understand the thought process because you do have the precast below and that it would continue or the element will be overwhelming. So I wonder if you've taken into consideration potentially painting the pattern that you're already mimicking from the facade that you're choosing to leave the same color of the precast. Do you follow me?
Yeah, your aesthetic eye would have matched what we had about two and a half months ago. So this conversation went around and around and we did end up thinking perhaps the addition should be an addition architecturally. And it was only because that stripe became so heavy running across that level. And we do have renderings if you're interested in seeing what that looked like.
I like to see, that was my, how I justified it in my head, the fact that it becomes top-heavy.
Understood.
But I wonder if there was a potential element in which you could cap it with masonry to make, I don't know, the difference. I, I don't know, I just can't, from an architect's perspective, I can't help myself, but you just continue that.
You're doing the right thing. This view is the one where the band got really heavy because it extended so far and ran so long that that was, I think that was the determining point at which we pulled the band and said, let's work with the top of the building. So it was a real, that's a great conversation to have, architecture.
Okay.
Okay, so I think it was called southeast, the southeast perspective you had up, it was the evening shot with some of the, the effect of having spandrel glass and light. All right, so backing up, when this building was developed and a lot of discussion about Old Town and we have ongoing discussions about how to activate streetscapes and, you know, what's good about a building to do that and ultimately what's not, what's not is blank walls, right? So the question is, this rendering is pretty stark where the addition is and where, even where you've inserted spandrel on the lower level along the back of house type functions of the police station. Is there a study out there or is there actually an intended, just as a show up here, to pull back from, pull the sidewalk back from the building and just really do more with the landscaping to soften all of that? So that instead of it being a stark wall that just sort of meets the ground and, you know, doesn't do much for the streetscape, do something more with the landscape strategy?
Yeah, do you think that that is, so we are trying to do that against the addition, but is your question a little bit more, should we be engaging more of the facade running along there with more landscaping as well?
Well, it's a question. I think, my question is, have you looked at that? Because I think once you begin to infill the glass there.
Yeah.
You don't get credit for glass anymore. You know, it won't be lit, it won't be interesting, it'll be just sort of a, you know, a blank facade, even if it does have a little relief. Because we've seen that. I mean, that's a technique on a lot of buildings around and it isn't, you know, it looks good in elevation, but the reality is people walk right by and see the reflection and nothing else.
Right.
If I may jump in, I think, you know, I enjoy the fact that it's a hardscape where, you know, it lends more to the urban feel of everything paved without the landscape. I wonder if you have considered an interiorly, internally illuminated option for that glass, let's say in the evening? To activate that space?
Yeah, you know, there's, this could go in a lot of different directions. I mean, there are some cities that will sort of embrace almost like a commercial approach and use the windows as a way to advertise functions and, you know, promote some of the arts that are going, or whatever it might be. I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna get into that discussion tonight, but I think what the, the point would be, I'm not sure it's right to just leave the existing extent of paving there. It's a pretty wide sidewalk already.
It is.
And it's essentially going nowhere now. It's kind of the end of the Old Town walkway and it narrows down and, you know, a modest walk will get you then all the way up to St. Martin's and that's great. But I wonder if there's something that should be thought about here where we soften all this new kind of hard opaque wall and essentially create, you know, a more...
Linear park?
Yeah, almost, yeah, sure. Call it that, a linear park or just a much stronger buffer. So that's one question. I just wanna know if you guys have looked at that, if there's any discussion wrapped around that at all?
That's one spot that we did not look at to that extent. And the only thing, and I think it's a great idea, the only thing that I would be careful about is the height of the landscaping for SEPTED requirements against the police station. We wouldn't want anybody who can hide behind something. So it would probably be a little bit lower in character, I would think.
What is that requirement? I don't know the details of that.
Basically just landscape design elements to try to make sure we protect the police officers and the public in that areas. People cannot hide behind these things as they come around the building. So it would be lower landscaping.
Interesting, okay. But with some depth, you could add more layers. So it would have a lot more lush look than just some simple foundation planning, right? Would that be okay?
Good thought.
That would be in the realm of okay with those guidelines or?
I think we could do something similar to what's on the Old Town side. You already have that planting bed along the entire length. You just can't get too high with the vegetation just from the standpoint of maintenance, number one, and how far out you could actually come. We're also trying to balance that when we have the book festival and other things, that sidewalk is used quite a bit. And so it's often where the food vendors set up and they're in the street and that sidewalk is...
We also close the street. I mean, we've got a lot of width there when that happens.
We do, but I think we were trying to balance those issues.
That's fair.
So we can look at that if you'd like us to. I think the best way to replicate that would be to look at the Old Town side and say, do you come out the same distance and then go the full length again?
What is the depth of that sidewalk?
I would have to...
We are, we're about 10 feet out at the greatest extent and then about six feet out at the other.
I find that depth acceptable.
Which width are you talking about?
The width's along Old Town. The existing is somewhere in the neighborhood of six-ish feet from the building facade and we step out a little bit further because we run a sidewalk along it.
So are you counting...
The sidewalk's very, very wide. I'm not sure which dimension you're really referring to, but I mean...
Oh, I'm sorry, from the building. It's the wall from the building.
Yeah, I mean, we're on the probably 15 to 20 feet or 15 feet-ish from the curb back to the extent of the building.
I think we agree with you. To some extent, it also takes care of this issue that the gentleman asked about bollards because that wall becomes the bollard on that property side.
Okay. There is about a four-foot, five-foot setback from the curb where the street tree is, so really that reads as sidewalk, but in terms of functionality, it's not functioning as a sidewalk. So you have to think about, you may have 15 feet, but in reality, you only have about 10 feet of clear sidewalk width at that location.
Additionally, the property line is very close to, it's about one foot off, looking at what's on the screen, I think if we'll bring that up.
The city street though, right?
It is, but we don't put structures into the city street if we, to the public side.
The city could elect where to pave for sidewalk and where to leave out for landscaping, right? That would be within the...
Right, but to put the wall in, to put in, you know, a four-inch wall, it leaves you very little room.
I think the other issue is we have some easements along there. And in fact, we have some easement issues along Old Town that we have to get sign off already to get the actual emergency exit from the council chambers.
Fair enough, we're in discussion, so I don't, it's really more the question about what drove that and if there was some interest in that. And we can, we can move to the discussion when we get there, but thank you for that.
I just, I have just one quick question about the addition. Had there been any thought, or maybe I missed it or not, to give it some texture to those concrete walls? I mean, like, I don't know, Roman chariots or something? Just, not just, not just a concrete wall?
Well, that, yes. So the rendering, the rendering shows the scoring and the articulation of the windows and the panels above, so that's what's on there at this time.
Okay.
No Roman chariots.
No, no Roman chariots.
Any other questions? Roman or otherwise? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment on this application? No, really?
Project lead?
Okay.
Chief?
Thanks for coming, by the way. Greg, what is the recommendation, please?
So staff will be looking for two motions tonight, one for the approval of the site plan and then one for the parking waiver. So staff recommends the planning commission based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report finding a recommendation, grant AFP-7812-2018, amendment to final plan approval, finding compliance with sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city's zoning ordinance without five conditions. And then staff also recommends the planning commission based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report finding a recommendation, granting parking waiver of two feet of the required 26-foot drive aisle in limited areas, finding compliance with section 24-222A of the city zoning ordinance with no conditions.
Fair enough. And the drive aisle waiver is essentially existing, right? I mean, that's not even really changing the configuration of the...
Correct. There was a drive aisle waiver, well, not drive aisle waiver, but a parking space waiver granted at the time of the site plan approval for the office building.
The DAC project.
And instead of having basically 15-foot spaces, we, this project is going with the 26-foot, or the, sorry, the 24-foot drive aisle and then expanding space out to 17.
And that is still a reasonable drive aisle, so it shouldn't be a problem. Okay. So I guess first off, the umbrella comment for me is that this is fantastic. I'm happy to see the city finally moving on this and, you know, much deserved modernization of a facility for the police department, something that'll probably be more hospitable to the public when they come to mayor council meetings. So all, all great stuff. And I think my only criticism is that, and hopefully we can, we can get to some kind of a conversation about how to improve it a bit, is really the relationship to the street, especially along the South Summit Avenue side. Because with the insertion of spandrel and the blank wall addition, it is kind of in context, a little bit counter to what I think we wanted to see happen along the street. But obviously the value and the, the added asset to the city far outweighs calling that any kind of stumbling block. I would just like to really promote the idea that there'd be a little bit more look at how maybe to soften that and think from the pedestrian side looking in as opposed to just the building performing from its own plan. Because I think it's a great reuse of the building and I don't have any more reservations for that. But I, any other comments from, questions?
I would be a little harsher and say it's a direct violation of sort of master plan, the Old Town plan. You know, so it's, it's a road bump, but you still get over it, right? So I think, I think, you know, a vacant building or a poor use in this building goes further to hurt the streetscape than a, than a sort of poorly designed, you know, unnecessarily, you know, solid design, solidly designed facade. So inactive, unvibrant. You know, we can come up with a million adjectives that it isn't poor, but, but I think there may be some, as John's leading to, there may be some sort of linear park solution here where we just, you know, just a little bit more decoration, another couple bows on that piece, which is, which is, which is well-traveled. You know, if you walk through, when this high school's coming in and when the high school's coming out, it's a pretty well-traveled.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Piece of sidewalk and it is, for all those young folks, the identifying feature of their walk to school is that, that probably three blocks in front of the civic buildings, right? But I think, but I think there's some solutions there that just that a landscape architect can sort of focus on. Whether it's some public art opportunity, whether it's some, you know, slightly more careful and nuanced, you know, landscape design. I'm sure, I'm positive, there's a sort of linear park solution here that, that isn't just the sort of reconditioning of the existing, you know, orthogonal planters. You know, there's probably something else to be done there. So once we sort of block off that wall and make that a large, long, dark wall, I think there's probably an opportunity to make the park more interesting or whatever.
You know, I have to respectfully disagree. I think that they, if you look at the site plan and the six-foot portion with the planter, to me that seems too narrow for the type of foot traffic that you get. I think that this is ample for all the conditions that you just described. I think if you were to internally lit those portals, you would achieve what you need. I think, to me, to add landscape is to basically take away from the urban character of this facade. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't think I'm advocating ripping up paving and putting down green space.
Okay.
I think I'm saying that it's an urban park.
So you're in the middle?
Well, no, I think I'm advocating for an urban linear park. So something other than an orthogonal series of planters along a flat facade. So there's more elements, a million more elements we can add to the urban environment.
And my only pitch is that between staff and the design team, that, that leg of the building now goes, goes dark regardless of the, you know, how nice the spandrel looks and, and the addition, how well it's detailed. The reality is it's not going to be a people place anymore. And when you, when you cut off that zone through there, the view is cut off and things like that. So there has to be something to compensate for that, whether it's lit displays, lit windows, art, whatever.
Roman chariots.
So Roman chariots? And I don't mean to be flip about it, but it, but it's an opportunity to not step backward when, when there's so much attention to everything else being done. It's, it's just a spot that needs to be, needs to be looked at a little bit more carefully.
I think I agree with you. I think that more consideration has to be done.
And I, and I would just wrap a condition, Greg, just, you know, you, the staff and design team figured that out. I mean, just, you know, just, just put your eyes on that area, that area a little bit more carefully with the idea of the pedestrian side and what they experience when they walk by there.
I have a question, Greg. Unrelated to the architecture, but more related to pedestrian ways. South Summit Avenue and the old, the other, the other intersection there, the front of the building.
Old Town Avenue?
Old Town Avenue, correct, I'm sorry. Any provisions? Have there been any studies as far as traffic studies, taking into account now the police station as well as, you know, City Hall and the inter, interconnection between the old City Hall staff and going back and forth across the street? There's no light there, as we know. There's a stop sign one way, but it gets pretty tied up over there at times, especially with the train coming through. Has there been any studies done about that?
There was no study done as part of this application. It's considered, currently an office building and the new proposed uses would also be an off, considered an office building.
Right.
So they don't trigger the requirements for a traffic study.
Are there any plans to have anything done to look at that because of the intersection and the integration between the two buildings?
Not at this current time. Again, all these uses exist today in the same location. We've really only moved the police station slightly closer to City Hall. So all of those functions still happen today. There will be a little bit more back and forth once the other portion of the building on the third floor is renovated and used by city departments. But we haven't determined which those departments will be. It's more than likely those departments will be internal departments, not external departments. So things that don't receive a lot of public will probably move to that portion of the building.
It'll only come up once a year, Lloyd, when, when, you know, inevitably there's backup there, like there always is. Because the train and the parking.
Well, certainly, I was hearing.
And so, you know, the other exit's great emergency in and out, right? They shouldn't have any problem.
I lament, I lament the fact that we lost the cut through them.
Yes, right. And so they have their own, you know, emergency exit, right? And then, and as long as the trash cans aren't being picked up that day, then you have the other ones. But, so there's going to be one day a year when it's blocked up on one side, the trash guy's there and the fence is not operating and they'll have to walk, so.
But I think, you know, Lloyd raises a very significant point here. And the fact that you have the gas, the post office entry, you have the pavilion, the pavilion here. You have now these uses that somehow connect to, to City Hall. And you are, like inadvertently are going to create the need for having a crosswalk there. And so I, I wonder how we...
We, we have not looked at that. Again, all these uses currently exist in this side. So for us, it's really, we do know there are issues with Old Town. You know, I'm an urban planner. That road probably should not be where it is, but it is where it is. And we actually moved it to where it is. So the city made previous decisions on where that road entrance would be. And we all realize it's not the optimal. But relocating that short of reconstructing this entire stretch or removing those office buildings? Because there is a crosswalk by the post office.
Yeah, there's a crosswalk on both sides. There's both sides.
Yeah.
Okay. But I think now that you're closing the bottom portion, you're forcing the traffic on that direction. I'm not speaking to the vehicular entry, I'm speaking to the pedestrian.
To be honest, we will actually be, in my mind, improving the pedestrian because you will not be able to go to that side through the secure area anymore. You will actually be forced to walk to the crosswalk to get to the police station side because you can't cut through anymore. To be honest, what happens now, I'll be, admit that I do it. Because I can walk to the police station, I can use what is now the entrance there. I would not be able to do that anymore. So I think honestly, the flow between City Hall and the police station will actually, from a safety standpoint, improve because you will just automatically know you have to go to that crosswalk.
Dennis, let me reframe it for you. So at this point, the building is relatively underutilized, right? And, and so when it's, when the police station moves in, when City Hall or when the council chambers, there, there could be some more activity there. But the bottom line is we're, we're beginning to see some real issues with traffic movement at that intersection regardless, right? So some of it has to do with cars that are waiting because the train's coming through, whatever it is, and all those sort of things that, that back up and change things. The fundamental question is if, if it gets worse or even continues in its current state, it's not a function of this product. But is it something that could be looked at for other, other ways to understand the, you know, whether it's, I, I don't know what the slogan is. The point is figure out the movement of traffic through there and make it better. Because it doesn't seem to be an active cause of concern right now. But putting city functions on this corner then just makes it more high-profile for folks visiting.
You know, from my perspective, not as a traffic engineer, but just observing, really closing the post office entrance would actually help tremendously. Because a lot of people try to cut across that when the train is gone.
That's true.
So some of those things might happen if the post office eventually site redevelops. You know, it might become part of a larger complex of the city in some form or fashion. But those entrances to the gas station and to the post office really also conflict with that. I think putting a light there would be very difficult, probably.
I'm not gonna, I may even want to talk solutions. My only point is once you begin to put public activity on the corner, so pick up, just for example, a meeting starts at seven-thirty with a mayor and council. Right now, you can get caught in a backup and not be able to turn left into there. So if you're not coming from either direction, you're kind of hung up and not able to access the site. Especially when the, the south end is closed off for the new secure parking lot, right?
Typically, the, the left turn movement onto Old Town is usually not backed up. Because the primary backup occurs in the other right lane because people are trying to get across the intersection. So, you know, doing it many times a day, going back and forth to public works, I don't usually have a difficulty, as long as no one blocks the City Hall entrance, of getting onto Old Town Road. Because that usually does not get backed up. Actually, people refrain from going past the crosswalk because they know they don't have enough time to get over into the right lane to go through onto Brooks Avenue.
So that's just, that's...
I think we are willing to look at it. We know there are conflicts there. I'm not sure there's a really good solution, you know? The real solution is maybe it should have lined up with City Hall entrance originally as opposed to where it lines up with the post office entrance. Because then you get more depth between where the railroad tracks are and that. But that's probably not going to happen in our lifetimes unless there's major redevelopment.
Okay. Good, thank you. So any other comment on the recommendation from staff? Any, any reservations with moving forward?
Nope.
No, it's great design, very well explained.
Good presentation.
Yeah, it shows a lot of sensitivity, so.
I guess the new outbuilding, I, I, what is the purpose of having a drive aisle around this, this outbuilding? I think, I don't know, it just, the back end seems like an opportunity for...
So the real purpose of that is really for the impound lot. So when we take a vehicle and we need to secure it in a secure area for, either through, we need more investigation on the vehicle or things like that. That's really the purpose of that area. And we currently have that now, right behind the police station. So we're trying to maintain that behind the outbuilding so it's not visible from the parking lot and all of that.
Okay, so there would be a stack around it?
Basically, you can get one car in there to, so we confiscate a car, we need a place to store it. And we don't want to store it in the building, so we'll store it back behind that building. And those move out on a circular basis depending on what's happening with that particular case.
Okay.
Okay, any other concerns?
We should just mention that there is a condition to, for agreement with the property owner to the south or to the, yes, to the west for, for the fence, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, which is great.
Okay, so we have two, two motions on the table we propose. One is for the actual site plan, the other is for the parking waiver. Any concerns with the first?
Nope.
All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations, move that we grant AFP-7812-2018 amendment to final plan approval, finding in compliance with section 24-170 and 24-172A of the city zoning ordinance with the five conditions as read into the record.
Before it is seconded, I need to make a clarification, I'm sorry.
Please go ahead.
So we were having a discussion about staff working with the design team to focus a little bit on the South Summit Avenue elevation. How might we insert that?
If you'd like to a condition, I can go, design team to work with staff to explore design options for southeast elevation to enhance pedestrian experience.
Wow.
Super.
Wow. Because he just said work it out.
Sounded like you didn't know what you were saying, but you did.
I'd like to modify my motion to six conditions as read into the record.
See, second, I mean, and six, that's, that's the addition of that elegant condition.
He looked like he did it, but he just said it like that.
He was working hard.
That's perfect. Thank you, thank you for...
We appreciate it.
Second.
All right, it's moved to the second at all, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. Next up is the motion for the parking waiver on the twenty-four-foot drive aisle and the twenty-six-foot drive aisle.
Mr. Chairman, I move that based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations, we grant a parking waiver of two feet of the required twenty-six-foot drive aisle in limited areas, finding it in compliance with section 24-222A of the city zoning ordinance with no conditions.
Second.
It's moved to the second at all, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much, great work.
Thank you.
Great work, appreciate it all, thank you. Thanks, Dennis, thanks, chief, and everyone else for, for those, thank you. Next up is site plan AFP-7821-2018, 903 North Frederick Avenue, the Fitzgerald Auto Mall and modifications to the lighting levels in the parking garage and other minor site alterations in the C2 general commercial zone. And presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening again, Jasmine.
Good evening again. Staff, before you present amendment to final site plan application for the Fitzgerald Auto Mall, which is located at 903 North Frederick Avenue. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section 24-172A, which requires the planning commission to grant amendments to approve final, final site plans. So the applicant is right now requesting to adjust the light levels in the parking garage and other site improvements. So I will have Jim Clifford, who's going to introduce the application.
All right, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioners. My name is Jamie Clifford. I'm an attorney here at Old Town with the firm of Clifford, DeBilious, Boynton, and Hyatt. With me today for the applicant is, for the applicant himself is Greg Steinbart, as well as the engineer who's sitting next to me with O'Connell and Lawrence, Doug Tilly, as well as the builder who's with Porter, and I believe it was somebody, and Mike Bartwick, who is the architect. We were here earlier, as you know, several times, this garage is due to be started in April. And you all sent us off with a pat on the back and said that you approved us to get this garage going. But there was an issue on lighting. Everybody wanted to know how we've been handling lighting and you've, you asked us to work with the staff to do that. And we've had a number of meetings regarding lighting. And what we've ended up with, and I think your, your package shows you that, is we've sort of got this hybrid that we've created. We're trying to replace display, storage automobiles that ordinarily are put on hard surfaces at ground level all around, you know, these car dealerships. We're trying to lessen that and build this garage so that it could take its place. It's a more efficient way to go about it. And it makes them, the auto dealers less dependent on Fairgrounds, Lake Forest Mall, and all the other pieces of asphalt all over the, the city. And it seemed like a really good idea and I think you guys agreed with that. The problem is we did create this hybrid and the staff doesn't know exactly what to do with it. And so they said, why don't we come back to planning commission and get their sage advice on, on how to handle this? The problem is that it's not just storage. If it was, the candle foot would be about five. It's not display, display, which would ordinarily put it at thirty to fifty candle foot. It's a combination of both. Most of the time, it's static, it's dormant, and it's storage. But every one of those automobiles has to be, be able to be, to be visited and looked at for its purposes of its color and its design by the customer. And rather than running cars back and forth, back and forth, out of the garage to let a customer see it, the intent was to take the customer into the garage, pedestrian customers into the garage and have them look at it. So we're set, we're faced with this dilemma of what the candle power should be there. And I thought that the team here did a very good job of putting together a series of mitigators to make this garage manageable. If you, if you start with, you already have it, okay. You'll see that the garage is sort of sitting in the middle of commercial space all around it. It has automobile, automobile dealerships all around that orange block there, which is sitting on Russell Avenue where the garage will be. All the residential areas are a good distance off, a couple thousand feet away. And they all have buildings between us and them. So what we're not, we're not really looking at a situation where we're worried about the residential properties and whether or not they're going to get bombarded with light. We're just looking for a responsible way to handle the lighting. And if you don't mind, I'm going to say just very briefly, yes, on a pragmatic level, as an English major, what I saw them do made sense. And then I'll let the, the experts tell you what, what they saw and what, what they tried to address. First of all, all the lights are going to be set back along the face of the wall, the exterior wall of this garage. Rather than having them sit right on the face of the garage or right inside the face of the garage, every light is going to be set back from the exterior, ten feet. In addition to that, and I'm going to try to use this term, it's an architectural term, I understand, is spandle panels. And those panels will create knee walls from the ground up on each level. And then also, there will be a one-foot drop down from the ceiling on each, leaving about a three-foot wide area, kind of a window area that, and it won't be glass, but it's just a reduced space that light can come out of. So the lights will be set back ten feet, they'll be set up a foot so the glare, you know, can't come straight out. It really minimizes the amount of light that can escape. The other thing that they brought in that you've already approved is the solar panels on the roof. That kind of addresses the dark sky concern. Because the solar panels will have, the, the steel structures that hold up this, the solar panels will hold the lights. And the lights will be underneath these solar panels. So the idea of, it's most, it's basically having a roof over top. It won't be a wide open area with the, with the light escaping upwards. The other thing they decided to do, and I think is a great idea, is that they're going to go into a dimming schedule. It's only relevant in the winter, obviously, in the summer, it's late, it's dark pretty late. But they would close, as they close at nine-thirty, they would dim the light power down to five, which is where storage would ordinarily be. And that will minimize all summer long, that'll really minimize any impact. And then in the winter, it would be a remedy after nine-thirty. Then they would open up again at seven AM with the lighting, which wouldn't be a problem at that point. Lights are set in. I think that's pretty much all that I wanted to talk about. There is a, already, there is one surface parking lot on the site that you have approved with thirty candle power. It's surface parking, it's a pipe stem that they, they retain for some parking. So they're really looking for that same approval. About thirty would be the average throughout the entire garage. And we think that that's consistent with the standards, standards for this kind of a hybrid, if there were a standard. The standard seems to be for display or for, or for storage, not in between. So we're here to talk to you guys about that, try to get some guidance on that and these ideas. There were two other items on there, one's been removed. It has to do with withdrawing, taking out a water line. I'll let Doug Tilly explain that to you. And the only other thing is the retaining wall, they decided to change the, the structural, how, how it's being constructed, not the location or anything else, just the, the type of construction. And again, I'm out of my legs. So with that, let me go ahead and turn it over to Doug Tilly.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to do the smaller, or the smaller, the smallest two of three items here. We, we went in with this AFP for three specific items. Two of them were primarily administrative and the third was, as Jim discussed, the lighting elements. You can see them as they're shown on the plan. Number one was, as Jim stated, the modifications to the wall there. There's no change in size, no change in location, no change in configuration whatsoever. It's a construction methodology modification to basically make it a little easier to construct two internal walls. The second, we went in, number two, you can see right there, there was a four-inch water line that was remaining on the plans that was shown to tie into the Toyota service building that's out there that we thought, it got left on the plans and it turns out we didn't need it when we were doing our initial design. We requested to have it removed. However, due to some further correspondence that we received from city staff, we, we've actually asked to remove that request, remove the request for removal as well. So, so that, that has been, so that's going to be hopefully written into this approval. So there's just a sort of a summary of the three amendments that were, that were provided as part of this initial application. And that pretty much clears up what I have. I'm going to turn this over to Steve Porter to talk about the lighting elements.
Okay, thank you.
So as Jim was kind of briefing everybody on, we've kind of been locked in here...
Well, so, as Jim was kind of briefing everybody on, um, we've kind of been locked in here to a five-foot candle, uh, average for a storage use, which is what the parking garage has been classified as. Their intended use, you know, is more, as he said, for this to be stacked, display parking, just like their parking lot would be with their cars now. So, the way we looked at this is, when we came to planning commission and staff, the plan we got approved to do this additional surface lot out on the corner, um, earlier last year, there was a thirty point seven-one foot candle average, which is in line with what the requirements are. Um, which I believe Jasmine, you and Ollie, it's between fifty for front row display and thirty foot candles for merchandising areas. So that's what we have chosen to be kind of the range of the garage that we feel is appropriate to cover that whole area. The other thing, as Jim said, this just kind of displays it out a little bit better. Um, you can see here on, uh, to the left, the yellow highlighted area shows a spandau panel, so we're just trying to demonstrate, you have about a three foot, uh, nine inch area that actually allows for any light to come through. You have a three foot high knee wall at the bottom. Um, coming over here to the right, you can see the light fixture showing that it's recessed up a foot. Um, you know, we're pointing out here, there's some shading effect and that's created by that, and it's breaking up any additional light bleed off, uh, that's coming from that. Our other thing here is that, you know, their normal operating hours are seven AM to nine-thirty PM. That's when they're looking for these additional lighting levels. Anything outside of that, uh, there'll be, you know, lighting controller that will dim everything down to five foot candles for the remainder of the time. Um, and then the last point Jim and me was the solar panels above, um, that certainly break everything up.
I exposed your thunder, didn't I?
Yeah, pretty much. You did everything, I'll make sure I cover it all here.
So you're averaging thirty foot candles in the lot now, the, the surface lot, with, with a hotspot at around fifty? That's what you, do you think you've got?
Eighty.
How?
Eighty.
Eighty for the hotspot? What is that, what, what would you be doing in the garage, you think?
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Well, so you have the photometrics, it has thirty foot candle, kind of an average, right, on the existing lot?
Yes.
With, I think Matt found an eighty, an eighty foot candle hotspot, you know, the, the max.
Okay.
Where would you be in the garage, do you think, on a max?
I'd say I have it right here in my files.
Same?
Same, eighties. There's some eighties.
Yeah, okay.
Thirty is the average.
Eighty-eight.
But they're back from the edge.
Uh, there's sixty, seventies at the edge.
Have you done, and right now, the light poles in the surface lot are probably, what?
Fifty foot?
The height?
Mm-hmm.
They are twenty.
Only twenty, okay.
Twenty-seven feet.
So, the, the one piece of this that just needs to be kind of acknowledged, and, and I think you need to tell us what you thought about it, is if, if you're driving along Russell Avenue and you look up into the garage, can you see a bare light fixture? Are you going to get a glare factor from seeing the fixture itself? Never mind the light levels that are measured at some horizontal plane, but the sightline into the fixture itself, have you, have you looked at that, or do you know?
We've not run a specific, um, sightline calculation, uh, but, you know, we have. I would believe that with the lights set back in the distance, that they are the ten foot distance, and with the shading created with the facade of the garage, that, that would be very limited, but it is certainly something that we can look into.
There's a surf- a surface mounted lights to, uh, recess.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Jasmine, can you, um, explain the current city energy codes? Are they being met with this configuration? Is there a, is there a differential between the energy codes and the amount of light that's being displayed?
So the, the city doesn't have really codified lighting standards, so they use the, was the I?
IECC.
Yeah.
For review, to make sure their, their performance.
Yeah, to the, to your question about the permit, uh, about the, um.
Energy.
Energy codes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, our city staff has looked at that preliminarily. Um, yes, the, obviously, the new lights will increase the energy. Where it sits right now, I don't know for sure. Um, basically what it is, is they, this commercial permitting will not look at it yet until it gets through this process.
I see.
So, so we have run the calculations based off of this, our electric engineer has, and it is in compliance with the two thousand fifteen IECC at the thirty foot candle level. Um, also, in guidance with that, is there a requirement in off-use hours, which is what we've proposed, that you turn lights down, you can, which is what we'd be doing. And the other requirement that you run into with the IECC is the daylight sensors on light fixtures around the perimeter. And because of the, the calculation of the actual open air space and the distance that we are back, I think he said if it was beyond five feet from the edge, once you're beyond that, we're no longer required to have those daylight sensors anymore.
Okay.
Is the exhibit that's, um, on the monitor, is that showing the ten foot setback of the lights?
So this is the level one photometric.
Yes.
Because the parking spaces are eight feet wide, correct?
You might have probably, they probably used the parking, the parking layout for, who it's used for, public use.
I, I just, I know that the, the way it was designed was a ten foot setback. I don't, I don't, I, I would agree with you in looking at it, that it certainly, um, doesn't appear that way, but that's certainly something that we're openly stating and would be a condition of this.
The light, the light level exhibits in the package aren't correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so, I'm going to ask for a general, because I think Jasmine, this is really for you and staff to, to come back with, not come back, but thi- this is really focused on kind of the setup for, for even seeing this application tonight, and that is, if this were a surface lot adjacent to a parking, uh, par- uh, excuse me, a car dealership, a thirty foot candle light level, average light level, really wouldn't have raised any concern. Is that fair?
Yes, that's correct.
But a five foot candle level in a garage is likely a minimum really for more safety than it is anything else. It's a light level that establishes reasonable level, light levels to keep people safe or secure.
For exiting and things like that.
Yeah, just for finding their way, for driving in, for, you know, whatever. So, the question is, where, where do we cross paths in our code or in our guideline that's, that's bringing this as a question now? In other words, if five is a minimum for safety, is there really anything that says there's a maximum in a garage? You follow, you follow what I'm getting at? Like we, so, wh- what I'm really after is that, for us to make a finding tonight, um, legitimately, we have to say it either complies or it doesn't, and if it doesn't, why are we allowing an exception or a waiver, or whatever the right, an adjustment or something like that?
It's not an adjustment, um, you're correct on the five foot candle, that's what was approved originally, and that's what our standard is, we usually go by. Um, upon review of the application, though, because of the request for the, a lot brighter fixtures, um, staff actually did not feel comfortable making a decision at our own, at a staff level, and so that's why we brought it to you tonight.
No, that's fair, I, I understand that, and, and so all I'm getting at is, there, there really isn't anything in the code or in, or any guidelines or anything to cite that would say that it's either appropriate or not. We're making a judgment based on comparisons or analogous applications or something.
Well, I think that we, um, the city council did not want to go as far as adopting dark skies legislation, but our direction to staff was to compare lighting in relation to the dark skies regulations.
But if this is internal to the garage, we're not really running up against those requirements necessarily, right?
It depends on how much bleeds outside of them.
Right, right, no, I understand, but, but I mean, there's, there's a strategy for cutoff, that's a different conversation, but...
And we're not sure about how much cutoff there is with the solar panels.
John, if I may, the, uh, the lighting standards that we were looking at with Ollie, uh, used thirty to fifty for display. They went to the low end of that, uh, figuring the average at thirty, uh, was, uh, uh, good enough to do the display and no more. So that's, that was.
Right, but that's, that, and that's what I'm looking for in, in more of a codified form. So, so we know that's out there. We know lots are getting that kind of light level for display, so there's nothing really inherently wrong with it, right? So to bring this up tonight is sort of questioning whether it's right. And, and I'm just, I'm looking for what, what staff would use as the, as the reference code to do that. The guideline for display is, is, is a, you know, some, some governing organization that talks about it, the dark skies really has more to do with how much, um, how much light escaped, right? Not necessarily how much you put on the ground.
Yeah.
And that, that's a technical thing we can work through with the right type of fixture and the right, the right layout.
And that is something, the, the current proposed fixture is a fixture that is, uh, that has a seal of approval from the International Dark Sky Association.
The fixture itself.
And then, of course, the, um, you know, the solar canopy, and to Trudy's point, you know, we don't obviously know exactly what that's going to do, but certainly creating a, a canopy above your fixtures is going to further make that.
That's off, subject.
That's all, that's all great, but, but I'm really looking for if, and, and I'm, we'll finish this as, as a discussion, but I just want to, all I'm really asking for, is there in fact something codified in the city ordinance or some reference in the building code that wiggles its way back to a lighting level that's?
Yeah, we don't have anything in the city code that codifies what the maximum minimum light level is.
That's all, that's all I was looking for.
It just, it just says that, that instructs the planning commission that they need to look at lighting as part of the site plan review, and that's in the code.
Okay.
Subjective, but no, no.
It is subjective, but to a point, you know, we do have a point of comparison, which is the requirements for the outdoor display, um, and lighting, sort of as our top end, uh, which would be fifty.
Oh, sure.
And then we have the, um, the storage, so I think, you know.
Okay.
We have, in my mind, there is a spectrum.
And, and, and the light levels related to the townhouses and the second floor, um, do have quite a good view of the parking garage.
Okay, fair enough. All right, um, so are, is the presentation completed, or is there more to talk about?
Uh, um, Mike Bruckwick is the architect, he just wanted me to make sure to point out that it, it kind of leaves a gap there. We have that five, uh, for storage, and we start at thirty for display. And it's just, we have to, we have to find a, uh, a way to address that hybrid use, because it's not been used, uh, a parking garage. This, um, hopefully, is, is the future, that this is the way car dealers will go in the future, instead of taking up all that asphalt.
Okay. All right, is there, so is that all of the?
That is.
Present, okay. Um, so is there anyone in the audience that is here to comment on the application? All right, I'll say none, let's, let's move to the official recommendation, then we can do discussion.
So you know in your package that staff doesn't have a recommendation, but we have provided two potential motions if the planning commission denies or approves the application.
All right, so once we get through the discussion about yea or nay, we can, we can talk about the wording, okay. All right, uh, concerned questions?
We've expressed them.
So, how do you feel about the application?
Uh, I, so, I think staff's asking us for a sort of use, subjective use interpretation of the structure and its lighting level, right? So, um, uh, I, I sort of, I think we're right that this is a, this is not a parking garage. It's a, it's a display, vehicle display facility, and, uh, it can be lit, you know, at the appropriate level. You know, I think there may be some more lighting controls that go beyond just dimming at nine-thirty, which I think is great. Uh, maybe, you know, proximity detectors after nine-thirty, you say, look, if nobody's in this garage, that shuts off, right? Especially for those townhouses that do, you know, down at the end of that street, there is a residential full view of, you know, until something gets built in that back lot, there's full view of this garage. It's, it's their moon, right? So, uh, so they, so, you know, I think there's, there may be something else after nine-thirty to say, yes, it's going to step down to five, and if nobody's in there and hasn't been in there for ten minutes, the lights go off.
Right.
Right, I don't, I don't know that, uh, that there's a business.
Or steps down to a safety level.
Yeah, that's that question.
Yeah, we would not want them to go down, you know, to, to zero, right, obviously for security reasons.
It's a secured garage.
They're storing all, you know, brand new cars, they got a significant amount of, of inventory stored in the garage.
Sure, yeah. Uh, proximity detectors work pretty well.
Yeah.
So, if somebody's in there, it's lit.
Yep.
If nobody's in there, it's not. Uh, it, it's one solution, uh, you know, I'd love, I'd love you to take another look at it and see if there's something else to take up. I think that there isn't a safety factor when nobody's in there, right? We have proximity detectors everywhere now.
Right. And it turns the light on when you want it.
Yeah, right. It's not a safety issue, it's not a life safety issue. It might be a security issue for a business, I'm not sure, um, but if somebody's in there, the lights are on, right? So, um, uh, my other, it's sort of, sort of pain is that your, your lighting analysis, which is pretty critical to the application, is just not, not right. They gave you a bad exhibit, right? So your light fixtures in this exhibit are way too close to the perimeter. So I think the sort of premise that we're talking about, which is that, you know, and I, and I can analyze it and say, look, between your fifteen foot fixtures, it's a ten, ten foot candle, you know, in the analysis, so it's going to be a ten foot candle ranging at the perimeter, you know, but what you're showing right now is that there's eighties and seventies at the perimeter, and it just, it's not, I don't want to approve this exhibit as part of this.
Fair enough.
You know, piece, and say it's okay to have an eighty foot, a five foot, two foot fixture right off the, right off the perimeter, you don't have an eighty foot candle edge, so.
I think we probably need to move before we condition this to staff reviewing an, an accurate, um, either photometric or lighting plan or both.
Yeah, I think it could be a condition, it doesn't have to be, yeah.
Um, you know, I think we've beaten this horse to this, so don't run me out of this place, but, um, the facade, I know we talked about the facade endlessly at a different point, um, but I wonder if, like, there was to be a mesh or some sort of, um, treatment?
Screwing.
That screen that will mitigate that, uh, the exposure, uh, the bleeding of that light. I think, um, you know, something like a grid that deflects the, uh, the light, a pattern that doesn't have, uh, something that is see-through, but that it will create a separation. Um, and that's what I was saying, I know we've talked enough about the facade.
I mean, I think I'd also be willing to trust that the photometrics in the lighting plan, when it's brought up to date with staff, that the fixtures do have a cutoff of some kind, so there's not, I'm not talking controls, I'm talking about that you don't see directly into the fixture. You know, the light levels themselves are like a lot anyway, which there, which there is between this and the, and, um, Watkins Mill anyway, I mean, there's already a brightly lit lot, so the issue would be, can you see the light source itself in a, in a, in a bright form?
And, and I think I'm, I'm more speaking to the fact that if you're driving at a distance, um, the concern of the one foot, um, overhang, it's not enough to see through the next set of, of lights ten feet into the, uh, into the garage, that it would become a glaring factor.
It, it could, that's right.
So I'm, I'm just looking at other ways in which they can mitigate that.
Right.
We, we studied that early on, and we, when we, you know, we were looking at the original garage design, and we went over to Shitty Grove and looked at what they did, and they looked at a number of different sites, and, uh, nothing seemed to quite work right. Uh, one of the reasons is, is that, uh, it was the Fitzgerald Automotive Group's, um, desire that people see the new cars are in there, uh, and screening them off would just eliminate that whole idea. And also, what they tried to do is with the design of the garage, try to minimize, taking that window down, minimize it that way. And remember, this is not a standalone building in a field, it is surrounded by all the other light fixtures, you know, the Costco, uh, Kati Asher Box operation, all of the Ford, all of them are all around this.
And, and while I agree with you, I think that, uh, what you're describing is perfectly accurate for the ground level, but I, I think we're speaking to the upper levels, and I, at that point, you did speak of the, uh, of the wall, uh, that it's blocking a poten- a substantial part of the, uh, of the vehicles that you're storing, in addition to the fact that they're above ground, so, um, I'm just looking into, uh, potential options in which you could, um, avoid glaring.
All right. Anybody have any concerns with, with letting this move to a display light, lighting level? So, call it thirty, call it thirty-five, call it whatever.
My only hesitance would be is if staff, who's obviously already a little hesitant, um, uh, it feels, you, you feel empowered enough to make the sort of decision if we, we put a.
A condition.
Condition that says they need to, you know, redo their lighting caps, give you the right exhibit, and then, and from that, we give you some kind of parameter that you feel comfortable approving, so.
I think we also, um, need a letter about the turning on and off of the lights. We don't really have an exhibit in the record.
Nope, there's a letter, Trudy.
There is a letter?
Yes, from the border.
An justification to explain.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that.
But what I'm, what I'm thinking is, I think the question on the table is, do we, do we agree with allowing a garage to be more of a display and less of just security lighting, you know, at some level that's reasonable for a display? And then, there's the first qualifications that come forward with the proposal, which is cut, uh, controls that knock it down when it's after hours, or I think maybe we embellish, I say knock it down when it's, when it's not occupied, and, and do aux sensors and, and, you know, keep it, keep it low all the time unless somebody's in there. And I think the only missing link right now is some assurance that the photometrics and the sightlines, right, protect the, the distant neighbors from, from some, some undue glare, whatever that looks like, whether it's the fixture itself or just, um, spill over from, from a fixture too close to the side. And I think your exhibit could do both. I think you could have both the lighting levels at the perimeter of the interior of the garage, which should be at a relatively modest level, and a section through that somehow talks about where the first row of fixtures are, or any of the fixtures, and what you really see from the street and what you see from, you know, a couple of benchmark locations, maybe it's the row of townhomes that are, that are facing Watkins Mill is one of the, the benchmarks. Frankly, on the other side, facing. Frankly, on the other side, facing the car dealership, other buildings, it probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference, but I think it's, it's for the people driving up Russell Avenue back and forth that would potentially look up into these fixtures, like this. Imagine looking up into that, you know, or that, for you that's out.
Don't.
You don't wanna do that while you're driving. And for somebody who has a view of that lot from the residential side, what, what this further adds to that, that light, that light distraction. I think that's a calculate, a data point that you guys look at and just confirm is, has been addressed. If we, if we agree that amping up the light levels is appropriate for display, if thirty, you know, call it thirty, because that's the proposal, I frankly think it's okay, because I read five as being really more of a security and, and access light level, not, not something that's good for the public, or for a display or for retail component anyway. So I think thirty's appropriate, but.
Yeah, I have no issues with the use as an approved.
Okay.
Whatever we wanna call it, we may need to find a hybrid, you know, name for it, whatever we wanna call it. I have no problem with that use. I think it, I think, as the applicant stated, it's, it's something we probably wanna, you know, encourage, get ourselves straightened out, so that we can encourage this kind of construction in other places in the, in the city, get rid of some of that sprawl of asphalt and all for it. The...
Well, we have, there's, there's another project that, that has, you know, multiple floors of car displays, so it's, it's not an unknown quantity.
Yeah. In a much more dramatic way.
Back to my request, it is in the exhibit, but it, it's coming from the Bob Porter Company, and I would feel much more comfortable if we had the condition about the lowering the lights from Fitzgerald, on Fitzgerald's letterhead than on, on Mr. Porter's.
So that, that condition then becomes a part of the motion to approve. If you're, if you're all are comfortable with the approval of the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're, we're on the conditions with the go with it. So the one is, is the document, the commitment from Fitzgerald on lighting controls for occupancy and for hours, for the hours of operation, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think the second is the revised photometric and lighting, and lighting plan with, with an additional sight section study that explains sightlines into the four levels, and what, what you would see from, say, Russell, and what you would see from Watkins Mill. And, you know, this is not a heavy architectural drawing, this is really a very simple diagram that creates the geometry, so we understand what that is, or staff can. And I don't think it needs to come back for us, I think, I think staff can.
So, are you including, like, the kind of access when, you know, perimeter access when something, proximity, I mean, access when something comes close to it? Are you including that in the first condition?
I think that's what the aux sensor question is, is that the lighting controls will include both hours of operation and aux sensors to knock it down when it needs in there.
I just wanted to, I, I agree with that.
That'd be two additional, or two conditions.
Two conditions.
On top of our...
Yes, we're adding two, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, you said that's a common use throughout the city now to have these motion detectors?
Well, that's, that's a difficult question to answer, because it is, it's part of the buildings that have the daylight requirements in their, when they're doing their lead calculations. This is a unique condition, you're coming to us with the idea that you wanna now goose up what's essentially a, a storage, garage, light level requirement, to do something with display, and I think what we're saying is without the controls of an actual curtain wall to, to, you know, control some of that light suppose, we wanna see it done with controls.
Totally get the business idea of having to put it on display, like the use, think it totally makes sense. When a car is not being displayed behind a three foot piece of precast, concrete, you turn the lights on. I think you got a great, I think you got a great solution. I think, well, all right, I won't beat that one either.
All right.
No more dead horses.
Anything, anything to add?
I just have to say, I, I used to live in a left work on the third floor in Kentlands, and those lights behind Whole Foods shining through my living room, and I just don't wanna wish that on anyone. Like, there's the...
Fair enough.
So let's...
Now, there's quite a bit more distance in this case than the general.
I know, I know.
Jasmine, do those two conditions give you what you think you need?
Yes.
All right, so we've got three conditions now. We're moving forward with a proposal to do an approval motion, so do you wanna read that one then, as a recommendation?
Sure. So the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report, staff findings, and applicant's testimony grant approval of AFP seven eight two one dash two thousand and eighteen, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy-two A and twenty-four dash one seventy of the city code with three conditions.
Any questions or, okay, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report, staff findings, and applicant's testimony grant approval of AFP seven eight two one dash two zero one eight, find it to be in compliance with section twenty-four dash one seventy-two A and twenty-four dash one seventy of the city code with the three conditions mentioned.
Second. Move the second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, that takes us to our third plan for the evening, and that's for AFP dash seven five nine one dash two thousand and seventeen. Market Square Shopping Center proposes an amendment to final plan to approve a new sign package in the MXD mixed use zone, and presenting from staff is Ray Rokes. Good evening, Ray. Uh-oh. Last minute, last minute coordination. Hello, Ray.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to know that I will be recusing myself from this application.
Okay. At the advice of Assistant City Attorney?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Well, Phil, I think you're on it. If, without the full compliment of commissioners, Phil Lassell will...
He's alive, he's alive.
Will come, come and join us for this, this application. All right, thanks. Ray, please.
Good evening, planning commission. Before you tonight is the signed package for application AFP seven five nine one two thousand and seventeen. You may remember previously approving the application for new architecture and site plan amendments last December, with the condition that the site pack, or the signed package be brought before planning commission again, before final approval.
Right.
The signed package affects the Market Square Shopping Center, located in the Kentlands, between Kentlands Boulevard to the north and Market Street to the south. Market Square is owned MXD mixed use development. The previous signage package was approved under site plan K one zero eight four for this location. This signed package tonight will replace the previously approved. This application includes tenant signage guidelines, construction fencing, directory and directional signage, three requests for adjustments, and five requests for permanent identification signs larger than twenty-four square feet. The planning commission has the power to grant permanent identification signs larger than twenty-four square feet without the issuance of a adjustment. It should be noted that section twenty-four dash two twelve C four of the city code prohibits signage above the roof line or parapet wall, and as such, staff recommends disapproval of the adjustment request to allow signage above the roof line on the proposed tower in the pass-through. Required findings for granting adjustments include the circumstances must not have been of the applicant's own making. It is staff's opinion, since the architecture element that the proposed sign will be located on was included in the recently approved architecture, then any special circumstances or hardship is a direct result of the applicant's own doing. Staff can find no outside circumstances beyond the applicant's control that limits a site in a fashion that would permit following a sign, or allowing a sign above the roof line in the way proposed by the applicant. That said, staff is supportive of the rest of the applicant's application. Here before you tonight to present the application and to answer questions is Karen Garfield, Director of Development for Kinko Realty.
Good evening, welcome. Good evening, thank you. It's a pleasure to be back in front of planning commission. Since the approval of the AFP in December of last year, we've submitted both demolition permits and building permits, which are currently under review with the city planning staff. The sign adjustment requests and sign approval requests this evening are intended to further our vision for Kentlands Market Square. At the time of the AFP approval of signs were intended as placeholders with the commitment to return to planning commission. And as a reminder, here are some, how do I?
Here's your, yeah.
Thank God.
No.
Oh, but that's screwing it up. There we go.
Just a reminder to refresh, refresh everyone's memory of, these are some of the renderings of the, the architecture that we are in for permit and going to be implementing at the project. And just to remind everyone of kind of the flavor of the materials and just what it looks like. Retail's changing and demanding that we change to keep with it. Centers, the demand that we keep our centers vital and vibrant, just as the retailers have to brand their stores, owners of real estate need to brand the centers. This branding and modernization of design and style is driving the sign requests this evening, and we believe that good design, which, which we're achieving with our AFP, coupled with quality and memorable signage, is key to strong branding. With growing competition and online retail sales, it's critical to create interesting spaces that evoke a sense of place, and this is a very overused phrase, but it really does capture what retailers need to do to attract people. In addition, the current configuration of the site is nine distinct buildings, and we believe it's important to reinforce and tie the spaces together to let visitors know where they are, so they've looked at this, so we've really looked at the signage holistically. This is just a site plan that highlights the areas that we'll be talking about, and we can reference this as we need to. The next handful of slides are meant to highlight and emphasize that what we're seeking is high-quality design of signs, and these are a few places in the Kentlands Market Square. Sign criteria where we're being more rigid than the regulations of the city to achieve high-quality design. One is with blade signs, the code doesn't speak to the blade signs. We call them out and recommend specific sizes for lettering to really achieve a clean and high-quality look. In other places with canopy signs and awnings, our design guidelines, or sign guidelines, sorry, seek to keep canopies modern and in an appropriate scaled size with the overall design. Additionally, we have directory signs that are really oriented more for pedestrian wayfinding and pedestrians to find tenants through the property. These two are shown at the edges of the newly created paseo. And then we, construction fencing, this, this is an important issue for us. This is going to continue to be an operating center with operating businesses and people visiting the site during construction. We corporately have a very high standard for construction sites, and it's important to keep them orderly and clean and accessible. So by branding the construction fencing, it helps create a sense of interest and lets people know what's coming, and it blocks unsightly construction vehicles and construction staging. So our first sign adjustment request is for internally illuminated channel letters, halo, halo lighted letters, externally illuminated letters, or flat wall signs to be permitted on retail tenant facades that lie within twenty feet of the edge of the street abutting the building. And this is an existing condition, and the majority of our retailers are within or closer than twenty feet from the right of way, which really, we, we like, it speaks to the neighborhood feel, the very active and vibrant pedestrian tone of the, of the center. And we want our tenants to have high-quality signs versus, actually, I, I wish I had a picture of the plywood signs that are now kind of nailed up against the storefronts, or facades. So I don't know if you want me to go through all of the requests, or if you wanna stop during each one.
Yeah, why don't you go through them all, then we can, we can back up to questions or discussion.
Sure. Sign adjustment request two, very light on, on images, but this is just to allow staff to approve icon signs without planning commission approval. This is, this is consistent with light projects in the city, and will place responsibility on staff and alleviate the time and need to go to planning commission. Example of this would be, you know, a Starbucks logo. Adjustment request three, and this is where we respectfully, we agree to disagree with planning. This is to allow signage above the roof line on the new forty-foot architectural feature for branding and identification. This is an opportunity to really create branding, identity, and the, the lettering and signage is consistent with what we're doing throughout the rest of the center. Given the unique condition of this pedestrian passageway and the potential benefit for sighting throughout an, an, over twenty-acre development, we feel this feature is critical to the project. The advantage of the paseo is that it's increased pedestrian access and proximity to parking, but it does come with disadvantages, which are visibility of tenants. And so we think that it's very important to keep this, this feature and give an identity to this location.
So, so let's, a couple of questions on this one real quick, before we move to the next one, do you mind?
Go ahead.
So, but this is a specific, site-specific request, right? This isn't a general sign ordinance or, or sign package request, right? Right. So can you describe a little, you're describing in general terms, abstract terms, but can you describe in specific terms how people approach this, why this particular forty-foot monument is needed?
Sure. So this is an architectural feature that's in the, maybe if I go back to the site plan. This is probably not the, sorry. Yeah. It's, it sits right about here midway through the, the passageway, and it's about, it's forty-foot high. An architectural feature, because really, we thought it was important to have something to define the space, create, create layers of interest, and, and it's really a design feature. And we saw it as a good opportunity and place to continue the overall branding. So the sign actually is currently, the size of it is twenty-four square feet. And I, I don't know what, if, if I want more detail than, than that.
Yeah, I want more detail on that.
I guess my, my, I react, my reaction to it, and the question I have that, that could, I think, inform this is, the images you showed are what that sign looks like from when you're already in that passageway. You know, what, what are the sightlines to that sign from Kentland's Boulevard, from back portions of the parking lot? I mean, I think, I think the intent, I'm, I'm sort of reading into the intent of the sign ordinance was the concern of someone putting a giant sign above their building that was, that was super visible, had a, had a negative visual impact on the surrounding area, was a distraction. My gut feeling, looking at what you're proposing here, is that that probably isn't the case here with how this sign, given the height of the sign, the height of the surrounding buildings, and how this is sort of buried in the center of that passageway, that if you step back a good distance, it's not gonna be that overpowering, but without the exhibits to show that, I have a hard time, you know, validating that.
Yeah, we didn't do those exhibits, I, I think we, I, I do agree with you, we could do those exhibits, so. But I, I do think it's definitely more for visibility closer in and from kind of either end of the passageway. I don't, you know, from the Whole Foods parking lot or over, over there, you wouldn't see this, I don't think.
Yeah, and I think in, in the context of a waiver or variance, I think understanding that's important.
Okay.
But.
And, and just a quick question, these are internally lit letters, up that high, or they're not lit?
They would be internally lit.
Okay.
But they're halo lit, they're channel halo lit.
Correct.
Okay.
The balance of the requests are, are permanent identification sign approvals. And the first one is for Market Square, and this is for, to paint the Market Square, the sign right here, on the facade of the building. We believe it further reinforces the branding, it creates a unique style. One of the design premises of, of, of the design was to maintain the individual character of each building and each tenant's space, so it takes on a feel of a space, a place that was built over time.
Ray, qualify that term, permanent sign, like, what, why is this a waiver, what's the, what's the issue?
The permanent identification signs are not necessarily a waiver.
Or adjustment, sorry.
Yeah, neither is an adjustment. The planning commission has the ability to provide a permanent identification sign to be larger than twenty-four square feet.
So it's size.
And size, right.
And the, the adjustment here is for size, not, not to use it.
Right.
Correct. I was just giving you why, why I thought it was important. So it's twenty-four feet by two, two foot six inches, for total of about sixty square feet.
So, just a continuation of that question. Are we, with the terminology of permanent identification sign, are we constricting it to the actual name of the center and the name of the neighborhood?
They cannot place tenant names on these signs, otherwise it would become a building sign or a monument sign.
Right, okay.
So it essentially leaves the name of the center.
Okay. So if there was an artistic sort of license to that, that wasn't necessarily related to a tenant, but in some way graphically or another way, related to the overall neighborhood branding, that'd be okay, right?
Right.
Gotcha.
The next one is our, our old friend, the, the tower sign, and this is just at twenty-four... And this is just at 24 square feet, but per planning's request, we did include this in the permanent identification sign approval request section as well. The third request is for a graphic sign on the side of an existing tenant. This is at the edge of the paseo along Market Street. This is, our first choice would be to put storefront in this space to really have some transparency along the paseo. It's not feasible because it's an existing tenants' business there. So we don't think a big blank wall is appropriate. We're really trying to create a sense of interest and, yeah.
See, that's what I was talking about with some of that.
I picked up on that.
Chariots, chariots.
Chariots.
To that point about storefront not being feasible, is it something you guys are looking at potentially in the future as tenants change?
As tenants change, certainly, it's something that's in the cards. And then this is our fourth sign approval request. This is Kentland City Gaithersburg sign on the side of the theater, similar to the last request. This is, this is a wall that can't be transparent, there are theaters on the other side of it. And we believe it's an iconic sign that really plays off of the fact that you can't, you can't put windows in it. We like that it plays homage to Kentlands, it gives a nod to the city of Gaithersburg, and it's really a celebration wall. It's kind of what we call the Instagram wall for really that Kentlands Market Square branding. And again, the size, as noted, is about 109 square, 109 feet long by 23 feet high.
23 feet high, okay. So it's 17 feet shorter than the pediment that you were proposing in the paseo itself. So it goes, the paseo sign, that large sign is 40 feet high?
Correct.
And this is 23, okay.
Correct. And then finally, this is part of the holistic approach that we're taking to the signage. We would come back, I want, we just wanted to let you know that we are looking at the monument sign at the entrance to Market Street, and we would come back to you with a clear design, but just wanted to flag it as something in the, to keep the sign package complete.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Would you pull up, because I'm going to ask a question, but I want to, I need an exhibit to do with, one of the views of the tower with Market Square sign on it, either that evening shot, or it doesn't matter which one, but just one of the ones that gives it that perspective of the height, the tower over the rest of it. Okay. So in our guideline, we talk about not doing anything above the roofline. For sake of argument, if about 20 feet on either side of that tower, you began to slope up the facade and created a parapet gable, you know, that ended up peeking at this, follow me so far? And somebody put a sign on it, that wouldn't really invoke this question about above the roofline signage. Is that fair? This is a little bit of a leading question, but there are examples of facade work where there's a relatively thin applied, you know, roofline. It's a parapet with a shape to it that popped up above would effectively is a real roofline.
Man, it's, yeah.
And it might be a gable, it might be just a flat, you know, flat-stepped parapet, it might be, they're, you know, I don't want to name names, but they're out there, right? And then they become the placard or the backdrop for a sign to, in most cases, the business, not necessarily the center itself. You begin to step back from that, I'm trying to make sure we're fair and clear about what we're saying by roofline. If you, and we approved a site plan with this architectural on the plan, right? If it was a tower that had a footprint of, say, 20 by 30, you know, it was a bell tower or something, it has a roof on it, it's a roofline, right? I mean, I'm just trying to make sure we're very careful and professional about defining what it is we're saying when a sign can't be above the roofline. If you went to this, if you went to the 1920s billboard above a parapet that's on a big steel frame in downtown Chicago, that really begins to sound like a sign above the roofline that we don't want to see, or maybe the sign ordinance was contemplating. But when it's affixed to a piece of the architecture, I'm having a harder time disqualifying it as not, or having it above the roofline. That's the part I'm just struggling with, and I need some guidance, or I need some discussion wrapped around that, so we don't sort of arbitrarily.
To fill in sort of Phil's observation, which I think is right.
No pun intended.
Yes, I think it really is about architectural integration, right? Not about, you know, so we say sign above, I think you're right, you're intimating that there's no architectural integration of that sign. It's separated, it's a sign.
In our ordinance, what we're seeing in the ordinance, right? I think this is integrated.
Yeah, and so once you integrate something architecturally, it's part of the architecture, so.
And that becomes, I mean, unfortunately, it becomes another one of these subjective, how integrated is integrated enough?
Yeah.
To me, if you put that rendering back up there, what would be interesting to me from a point of comparison, aside from the sightlines, is, and specifically the one we were just on, the height of that front elevation or the height of that top roof of that building in gray, that's right on the right-hand side of that image, compared to the height of the tower? I mean, obviously, they're in different planes, but eyeballing it, I would guess they're probably about the same height.
No, it's a false second floor, I'm sure it's a 30-foot building. It's 10 feet higher, yeah.
The great, no.
Are you talking about this building?
It's 25 feet.
Sorry, Wayne Broadell, Architect. That's the existing largest building I'm up. I think the highest.
There is the rear staircase, and that's about 34 feet.
34 feet.
So I don't want to necessarily go to discussion, but I think what I'm trying to do is make sure we qualify what the sign ordinance says, and whether or not this is really an affront to that, or is really just another interpretation of how to integrate an architectural element. And I don't even answer, I'm just, I just want to kind of get that out there as a point that we can kind of qualify. Having said that now, so if that's, that issue's part of it, is there a size issue with it then?
You said it was 24.
There is. The way we looked at it is the adjustment would be for allowing the sign above the roofline, and then we classify the sign as a permanent identification sign, which then the planning commission has the authority to grant a larger sign. It's not a second adjustment, though, it's still one adjustment being approved.
But there are two issues in play. One is whether we think it's really above the roofline, the other is the.
The actual size of the sign, yes. And that would require approval from planning commission to allow a larger permanent identification sign.
But that's.
But it is separate. Because one of the, the reason why we looked at it that way as well is, one of the conditions is you can't basically grant two adjustments to the same sign.
Okay, fair enough.
It does seem like they're proposing to do a 24-square-foot sign, which would be allowed without further planning commission approval.
Oh.
Is that correct?
Sounds, so it's really just the issue being above the roofline?
Yes.
Or what you consider to be above the roofline?
Greg, help me out a bit too. So, you know, this is a guideline, right? So it's now essentially a new ordinance, right, for this neighborhood? So the permanent identification sign is blanket, so we're really saying, it's not, it's specific to the signs that are presented tonight?
Specific to each individual sign. That's a reason why the monument sign they want to do at the entrance would have to come back to you if they wanted to be a larger sign and with a lot per code.
Okay.
So.
So if another wall comes up in the big Kentland's thing?
It would need to come back to you if it's larger than 24 square feet.
Okay. If a better idea comes up in how to graphically do the Kentlands thing, but it's essentially the same design, would it have to come back?
If it was in the same parameters of the size, and it was close to what was already previously approved, I would think we could probably do it at staff level. But it would be something we'd have to review, I mean, it would have something we'd feel comfortable that you as the commission felt, what was originally approved by you at the time.
Wasn't a complete departure from that, okay. All right, any other questions on the, go ahead, Phil?
Well, I've got, it's not necessarily on either of the two things we talked about. The only other thing that raised any red flags for me at all in this package was the A-frame signs. And it has nothing to do with design, it has to do with their impact on pedestrian flow, pedestrian circulation, and where they get to be used. And I guess it's sort of a question for staff, whether there's anything in the city code, whether we need to add a condition or add some specificity in the design guidelines as far as making sure these signs don't reduce sidewalk width past a certain point.
No, I agree. The city code does regulate A-frame signs. There's regulations in there, how far from, you know, from the entrance it can be, where I should be looking at the sidewalk, and everything else about that. Their packet, anything that's not directly addressed in it, like the locations of the A-frame signs, would revert back to what the city code requires.
Okay.
So when we will review these, we will review these per the city code requirements for A-frame signs.
And it says that you can't, you can't block the public way.
Yeah.
Okay, it says it must not impede the flow of pedestrians. So I guess, who decides whether it's impeding the flow of pedestrians? Because you've got a, my, and this is just from my experience, walking through these shopping centers with A-frame signs, you've got, say, an eight-foot sidewalk, and you've got a three-foot sign, so you've got five feet left. At 9:00 AM in the morning, it may not be impeding the flow of pedestrians, but at 7:00 PM at night or the lunchtime rush, when 100 people are trying to get by there, you got people tripping over the sign. So it's, without a parameter such as, you know, must not reduce sidewalk width more than X, it's sort of hard, it's a subjective thing.
The way these are reviewed by staff currently, they're actually not, A-frame signs aren't reviewed by planning staff, they're actually reviewed by our neighborhood service division. The reason for that is they review them, and then they can enforce the location of those signs on-site on a case-by-case basis.
I guess that makes sense.
So Greg, point, so if a business happens to have a tree well right in front of them, they can't then add to that, and that's something you guys can work through at a much more specific level without having it necessarily codified with all of the different conditions.
Public nuisance.
And certainly, if you're seeing that, please call us.
Right. This is less reasonable.
I have several points. The original design guidelines in the Kentlands said that there would be no awnings. I know the Saul Center has one set of awnings that were waived in, that's the Panera awnings, but there were no other awnings in the Saul Center, and I believe that was also part of the guidelines when the original plans were made for the center.
The original design guidelines that were approved for this specific shopping center did actually allow awnings. It actually went further than that and required a relief. Awnings actually closed on the side too, and couldn't be opened.
Right.
So again, allowing awnings with their design guidelines doesn't really go beyond what's already currently allowed under the guidelines.
And I also noticed that there's a waiver for the icon signs. Can you explain why there would be a waiver for this property, for all icon signs that could be coming in the future? Is that for perpetuity, or is that just for a specific period of time?
Until these sign guidelines would be changed. We've done that in Crown, we've done it in Old Town, we've.
Washingtonian Center.
Washingtonian Center. So it's not something unusual that has been granted by the planning commission with sign packages.
Okay, just want a clarification on that.
Thanks, Mark. Any other questions? No?
Commentary, discussion.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Just here watching? Oh, yes, sir. Please name and address, or if you're not comfortable with address, neighborhood, please.
Tom Forrest, Fernshire Farms, across from this area. Question I have, on the tower sign, they said it was illuminated correctly, and what are the hours it's going to be on?
Okay. Anything else, or?
No, I just have that answer, Maggie, to consider that in your discussions.
All right. Well, what are the expectations for having that on?
They are internally illuminated letters and hours. I would imagine.
Dust to dawn.
But actually, the question is, is it something that would be on all night? Or does it go off with essentially the close, when the center closes? Which is a little bit soft, because obviously the movie theater might be letting out later than a business might close. But loosely speaking, is there a closing time when the permanent center identification signs are turned off?
I think it varies from property to property. In this case, I would think it would probably stay on.
Yeah, I would think it would be on, you know, from dust to dawn. But we're also not talking about a 100-foot candle, you know, powerful light. It is going to be, you know, encased within the sign itself. So it'd just be more of like a glowing icon for people along Market Street, Commerce Square Place, the new passageway, and not broadcasting itself to the Saul Center side.
Okay. All right, anybody else have comments or concerns? All right, so Ray, why don't you go through the recommendation, and then we'll move into discussion?
Staff recommends that in a planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, grant AFP 7591, 2017, Market Square sign package, finding it in compliance with Section 24-170 and 24-172A of the city code with two conditions. The first condition is in place because staff does not recommend approval of the adjustment to allow signage above the roofline, as stated previously in the staff report. Staff believes that the situation is of the applicant's own making. As such, it does not meet the requirements of findings set forth in Section 24-213F of the city code. The second condition is in place because staff recommends that requests for the larger permanent identification signs regarding the Market Street monument sign and the wall sign on the pass-through, return to planning commission when the applicant applies for a final sign permit, because it does not contain enough. It doesn't contain enough detail.
Right. Which they've acknowledged in the presentation, that's really a to-be-determined package right now. Okay. All right, any questions on the recommendation? Lloyd, look, you were going to jump in.
Well, I was just going to say, I have no problem with above the roofline. I think that this monument sign, whatever you want to call it, this tower, is a very unique feature. I think part of the thing that I like about the sign package is, there's a lot of funkiness here, a lot of differentiation. It's not sterile, like we've seen in so many other shopping centers. This is different. I like the idea of the movie theater with the large Kentlands on there. I like the idea that even the lighting that I've seen so far in your renderings, I mean, just to bring that area to life, I think it's really important. And it will also, I think, in my opinion, draw people into the downtown area, into the Market Square area, as well as into the individual work-live units that are off of Main Street. And that's really important, it's imperative we get traffic there. And I think this sign would be a tremendous monument to get people, to draw them over to this side of Kentlands Boulevard as opposed to the Saul side, where, you know, everybody knows there's a giant and so on and so forth. But this is a unique area, and it's also the entrance from Great Seneca coming into Kentlands Boulevard. It will draw people in. So I think it's, I have no problem with it.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
You know what?
Well said.
Phil? I think, you know, given staff's recommendation against approving the tower sign, I think we should have a little bit more clarity for the record from our standpoint. It seems to me from our discussion earlier that what we're sort of making an interpretation about what above the roofline means, or what the intent of the above the roofline restriction meant. And I have zero problem with the sign at this location. My only concern is any sort of precedent or any sort of thing that sets going forward for other applications and the situation that that might create.
I agree.
And just to provide some sort of clarity for staff and for everyone else, what is the actual, and I haven't actually gone and looked up the code wording itself, what is the actual wording in the code about above the roofline? Does it literally just say, "Sign shall not be permitted above the roofline," or is there any more detail provided?
It's very broad, yeah. It states two things. So under the commercial signs section of the sign ordinance, it states that no flat wall sign shall extend above the roofline or parapet wall. Further, under their definitions of a roof sign, we'll pull it up here. Roofline is considered the apparent uppermost edge of the roof or the top of a parapet, whichever forms the top line of the building, silhouette, or facade.
So, reading that, I'm doing my impersonation of an amateur attorney. The idea of a flat wall sign extending above the roofline is not what we're looking at in my mind. A flat wall sign extending above the roofline is somebody having a four-foot by eight-foot internally illuminated sign that they screw to the front of their building and the top two feet of it extend above the roofline. This is an element of architecture that we're putting a sign on.
No, I agree with that. I actually think, I actually think that the danger we have here is not understanding that that's what's going on here. I don't think that the actual proposal is inappropriate. I think the problem is, if it gets interpreted as being, you're able to just poke a pole on the top of a building and mount a sign to it without integrating the architecture, right? Without it being a meaningful part of what's going on. Candidly, it's a little bit thinly veiled right now. I mean, it's a thin little piece that was, that might be there, it might not be. It isn't, it isn't as well-integrated as it maybe could be. But it has some relevance to the way the whole center is beginning to find a way to kind of orbit around some materials and some forums and some, you know, excitement to animate the area. You know, in another place in time, you could just as easily say, well, I have this little strip center, and I've just tacked on this pole, and here's a sign on top, it's part of the architecture. And then we'd be in that position of kind of making a judgment, probably in the other direction, that was a little, again, subjective. But the discussion does need to reflect pretty strongly, I think, that. the discussion does need to reflect pretty strongly, I think, that, that this came with a much more comprehensive architectural package, the elevations, the, the massing, the way to, the way to kind of mark, mark the zones. And, and frankly, again, to be candid, I think a lot of the parapet work we see is just the same thing only made a little bit wider. So, you know, it's a little bit disingenuous, I think, to, to look at some building that's, that's, that's crept a big, you know, tacked on a big gable on the end of it, that's no thicker than what it needs to be to keep from blowing over and putting a sign on it and saying it's, it's the roofline, because frankly, it's not. It's a, it's a parapet with a, you know, with a sign placard attached to it.
I, I agree with what Phil said, and that was my, that was my only concern about, I, well, let me say, I don't have a problem with that. I think it, it's, it's harmonious. And that's what I look for. Is it harmonious with the, with what, what's going on in, in the, the language and, and the site? And, and I don't think that it's something that looks like an, an add-on. I think it's something that was really well thought out and I like the way it looks. I wa, I am concerned about the precedent we set. You know, someone says, "Well, you did it there, can we do it?" But I, I think we do have to be very specific about the integration into what's going on and, and is it harmonious, is it incongruous? And, and I, I like the way it looks. I like the, what, what it's stating about the, the area. So I don't have a problem with it at all.
No reservations with this proposal, as, as it stands. Okay. Anybody have any reservations with it?
I'll fill it out just a bit. Um, I, I know we're, um, down the road architecturally. But I think, and what John was probably hinting at, is that if you used, if you looked at this from the other side of the mirror, right, and you said, "If there's not a sign on this thing, would it be sort of an architecturally obvious move?" You know, is there, is the sort of architecture of that whole series of facades is, is with this element without a sign on it, makes sense, right? And it mostly does, right? It's probably not like all the way there, but it mostly does. It's a little bit forced, which I think might have been. I'm not being mean. I think that John said it, and he's never mean. So, but it, but it, uh, but so, but because it's really close and it, and it makes, you know, some sense architecturally, free standing all by itself to sort of differentiate, like you were saying, the different bays, the different uses as you march down the street in order to create vibrancy and activation and all, you know, visual, um, differentials. Uh, it's, it's certainly, you know, like almost there. So sticking a sign on it at that point, to me, doesn't matter. I think it fully meets the code. That's, that's, you know, great, just describing.
You know, not to, there's actually precedent right there in your own backyard. If you look at the existing Kentlands Theater, the roofline is at whatever it is, and there's this cute little deco thing that builds up to a huge sign that says "Cinema Above the Roofline."
It's actually a grotesque example, yeah.
Yeah, so, listen, I mean, we were all excited about that because it was, it was an architectural element that also carried out the role of sign.
Sure.
This happens to be a mid-century modern version of that same expression, right? And I, so I think it's got some real Much more subtle.
I, I, I'm a very aesthetic person. I'm not an architect and I'm not even trying to play one up here, but, I mean, it doesn't offend me.
So I don't, I don't really want to fly, I mean, listen, they also say, "We, we have nothing but the highest respect for staff and their, their approach to really analyzing thoroughly"
And that's what they should do.
Very thoroughly what the ordinance is and what, what the intent was. And you guys are around when the sign ordinances were written and, and these, these, um, this criteria was established. So I, I fully respect how the analysis, um, plays out. But I think in this case, I think we have grounds to take, take on the role as, as looking at the outside of the ordinance and, and interpret what this proposal does and why, why it's, it has merit, though it doesn't fit the letter of what the ordinance, um, appears to, to say, which I think you've done a fantastic job of analyzing. So I don't want to make it sound like we disagree with you. I think, I think we're going to take a different tact, essentially, and and understand that the flexibility we have that you may not in, in taking that wider interpretation. So that's my proposal to the commission anyway.
A completely subjective question, probably for the architect, is, is the finish in the renderings is dark with the, the lettering silver or white?
Yeah, it's going to be like a
So the Revit model is showing gray with the white lettering, but you're actually, the renderings are correct, right? So it's a black, like, so it's not that. It's the, it's that.
No, the, the, the previous image, I think that's the shadow side, as you're saying, like a, like a dark, like a darkened side of the sign. And that's like a nighttime shot. But, um, no, the, the intent of the finish is going to be more of like an anidized aluminum, um, not, not a uh, medium bronze as it kind of appears there now.
But it's going to be glowing and not harsh.
That's correct.
Okay. The other discussion
Kind of like the dark. But that's, but that's, that was just, that was a subjective question.
Um, the other discussion
We haven't got the shop drawings yet, so good chance.
Yeah.
Uh, that's up to you.
Um, I want to focus just for a minute on the, um, large, um, super graphic on the side of the theater. It says Kentlands. So I, I just have sort of, it, it just raises a question. One is, how and who should own Kentlands as a name of a place? You know, I would get it if it sort of had Kentlands reference at Market Square, kind of reiterating what you have elsewhere in the, in the, in the center. But, you know, we've got, we've got a bigger commercial district that we've been calling, help me out here, would it, would it be in a Kentlands Commercial District, right, or?
Kentlands Commercial Boulevard, Kent, Kentlands Boulevard Commercial District.
Kentlands Boulevard Commercial District.
Perfect, Brandon.
So, um, but no, the, the point being that there's a broader, um, there's a broader area that owns that name, not just the center. You know what I'm saying? And so, so for wayfinding or for place-making, um, I'm a little bit, I'm just sort of, it's a point I'm thinking about that, that maybe this shouldn't, shouldn't try to own that name quite as big. Well, no, but it's broader than that. I mean, it's broad, you know, this is an area and, that serves and, and, so it's just, it's, it's a thought I'm having. You come in here proposing Market Square for permanent signage, right? And that makes sense to me because that's, that's the, the brand of, of the center. But then all of a sudden, there's a big super graphic that kind of goes in a different direction. And, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a discussion point. I'm, I'm open to what you, what you guys' perspective is on that.
It's interesting. It didn't really occur to me, but I, I, I was kind of happy that they were branding the neighborhood and the city in that sign. I, I was kind of happy to see it, and it's not just about me, 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 it's about us, you know, so so I, I would encourage it, but I think it's an interesting, it's an interesting point that you don't want to sort of rebrand everyone else away from the idea. But, you know, I, I'd also love to start a trend, you know, just, um, pontificate a bit of it. These big, these big sort of, you know, super graphics are great, right? They're in, they're hip, everybody loves them.
There is a monument sign, though, as you enter from Great Seneca onto Kentlands, onto Kentlands Boulevard. It says Kentlands.
Yeah, it does.
So, I mean, there is a precedent for that, and I believe
On that side of the street.
I'm sorry?
On that side of the street.
I, I think the only reason we're having this discussion is because we haven't hit the master plan goals yet. I think if we, if, I think if the site, if both sites were fully developed in the way the Kentlands was envisioned, we wouldn't care who put Kentlands on what building because it would feel like one community.
That's fair.
The reason we're having this discussion is because in the current sort of interim state, you've got one side of the Boulevard and the other.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
Not that it validates the concern, but
But I'm, uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to invalidate the concern by saying that, uh, that I, I think it's a great precedent to set. So if all of our, our neighbors, all of the neighborhood begins to take a sort of graphic, interesting sort of approach to the neighborhood, Kentlands and City Gainsburg, and, and starts playing with it and making super graphics out of it, and making neat signage out of it, and sort of torturing the letters and doing all kinds of great stuff, I think that's, it's a great precedent to set. So, so we say, "Look, they haven't done it yet, so we shouldn't do it here," is, is, gives me a little bit of heartburn.
But we, in a, in a previous, you know, thing that came before us this evening, we talked about like something that was very plain, and now we're get, we're get, we're getting a little more, a little oomph. And, and I like that. I, I like the oomph. I like that, that it's a destination. You know, and I understand we have, you know, guidelines and, and rules and master plan, but, but I, I think this is making it something unique and something that's going to be nice to go see. Oh, that looks great. That, that's, there's some appeal to it.
Good, yeah. But Danny's usually a good foil to figure out if you're doing the right thing from a customer standpoint, so I think that's great. But back, back on the sort of, uh, the sort of geeky architectural thing, it's like, the, some of your graphics, like in the, on the side wall where you've tortured out the Kentlands on that piece, uh, you know, it almost, to me, it's, you're almost holding yourself back. Like, I'm afraid, I'm almost afraid to approve this because you're just going to sort of stop thinking right now and you're going to build this. Whereas like, there might be another idea in here. This, this is a great idea. Whether that needs a sort of, you know, a gray, you know, photo texture behind the K, you know, or whether it needs, you know, uh, I don't know what, you know, sort of the Kentlands, you know, a, a background imagery of the detailing or something on the, on the old farmhouse or something, you know, that, I'm, I'm not, I'm not giving you ideas. I'm saying, I, I hate to sort of, I, that's one of my questions was earlier. I'd love to approve that there be a big sign and that you take some liberties with the graphics.
Well, in this case, I think, I think the way to take this, I, I'm, so thank you for the discussion on the, on the theater sign, because I think there's, as long as it's thoughtful. I mean, that, that's sort of what I was going with this. Um, I mean, this was actually charred and built when Lakelands was concepted, so there's a little bit of that. This was a combined kind of area, but the sign in the paseo, the interesting thing about that is, that needs to be art. There, there's really no reason to restate Kentlands or restate a name there per se. I think, I think that's your opportunity to do something much funkier and even maybe take it out of the, out of the realm of sign and just call it art, you know, and do something public and interesting there. You know, as long as it's not somebody's branded icon, you, you have a lot of latitude, frankly.
Yeah, which is why my, was, the root of my question earl, much earlier, to say, "Look, when we approve this sign, we're approving this sign." You're saying, really? And to give you enough
That one is actually one of the ones that have not, they have not provided us the details yet for, so that would have to come back to you anyway. So
It says, it just says, "Passageway graphic signs."
Oh, okay.
This is a guideline. I mean, the other thing to realize, this is guideline. None of this is fully designed yet. So that makes, that makes perfect sense to me, right? So
Yeah. I, I mean, the, the feedback we got from staff earlier is that, that, that some of these are actually what's going to be put up. This is going to be put up.
Correct. The ones that they provided the details on, where they gave you letter heights and what it's going to look like and where it will go exactly on the wall.
This sign is going to
That is the one you'll be approving as a permanent identification sign, and that is what they propose to be building or putting on the wall.
Right, right.
And so if this sign wants to come back, or wants to be modified in some way, it's going to have to be either modest, very modest, that staff feels comfortable approving it, or has to come back to us, which just seems
This particular sign is going to have to come back to you no matter what?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm pointing at the, my screen. Which is the, the large countenance on the side of the movie theater, but
Right, okay.
Yeah. Uh, so, so if that sign has a modest change to it, you can, you'll prove it to staff, but if they, you know, start feeling their artist roots and something, you know, crazier goes, oh, they're going to have to come back to us, which just seems like a burden to me. Because I think the idea is that we love the super graphics on that wall and
I think we're converting the guideline. I mean, I, I think, you know, frankly, if it stays within the guideline, which is a super graphic with a, with a, with a neighborhood reference, I don't know why we would, we'd see it again.
I would say, I mean, defer to, to Frank to a bit here, but I would say if you feel comfortable, and I think it's in the record, that you feel comfortable with staff making a determination on what that sign is in the future within a certain amount of leeway, I would say, based on the size.
Yeah.
I think we would have to clarify on that.
Which, which sign are you talking about?
The sign, the Kentland sign on the movie theater.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Because they, they have a dimension on that already, so that's
Right.
But the point is, if it goes from being a white outline, half an, I mean,
Right, I understand.
The guideline is the fundamental approval tonight, right? With, with the permanent identification sign is riding along at its form that it's being presented. And if we have any, you know, there's any deviation from that, the guideline should still be able to drive a reasonable approval from staff, right?
Yeah.
So we don't want to have two things, we don't have both things, that we don't want to have a, a sign, a prescriptive sign approval and a guideline. We want a guideline. And the, the demonstrated solution for it is within the guideline, anything that comes along for the final, you know, the final mechanical drawing for the artwork or a shop drawing for something that's fabricated, as long as it's largely in compliance with the size and the basic messaging that was proposed, they shouldn't have to come back, right?
Yeah, I would think, again, with the discussions you've had tonight as a commission, I think we'd feel comfortable approving it.
Okay.
Look at reviewing that ourselves at a staff level.
And we say, we state that the intention is that this, this package should be a minimal amount of care put into these signs or interest be put into these signs, and if, and if better ideas are out there, we're encouraging the applicant to take them and really make an art piece out of it, and then staff can approve this.
Good. I think that's right. In fact, yeah.
Do you want to make a condition?
Well, no, what I was going to suggest is the wording in the guideline itself makes a reference to artistic or something like that as opposed to, as opposed to what? As opposed to just a mechanical sign, just a, you know, a, a utilitarian sign or utilitarian, um, utilitarian identification piece.
Permanent identification sign.
Permanent identification. Um, all right, so what, help us get organized here, Ray. Um, any other concerns, by the way, on the discussion for?
My, I had to say, my only comment in the whole package was, I had said a minor comment about the, um, uh, about the, uh, the A-frame signs. You just had a couple imagery, a couple pieces of imagery on there for stanchion signs, which can be really hideous things when they're, when they're done incorrectly. And I think you had a hideous one on there, so, but, but
Well, that's not an A-frame, right?
Right, it's not an A-frame, but it's, it's on their, it's on their page. That's part of the guideline. So I think it's, it's one you probably want to swap out for an A-frame. There's two of them.
This thing?
Yeah.
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 Minor, my eighty bit, I'm just picking at you, that's all.
Plus I can fall over.
All right. Anything else on the guideline itself globally?
Did we want to on the, uh, architecturally? I mean, they're, they're showing signs on, on open-sided awnings. Did we want to stipulate anything or that, that's fine? It's an art, it's a different set of guidelines, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm On the awnings.
The, the awnings.
There, there will be allowed to be opens-ended. Um, right now, again, I think, I believe, if I remember correctly, the sign package requires them to be closed on the ends for the shopping center.
The current.
Yeah, the current one.
This is replaced.
The new ones are replaced that allow them to be closed or open. That's great.
That's fine. Um, all right, so let's summarize where the motion needs to go tonight.
Okay. We eliminate number one.
Greg can do it.
Greg, Greg.
We need to confirm whether or not we're approving the sign to be above the roofline.
Okay.
Uh, or if we want to
Basis for that.
So I think the first thing, I think the first thing to state is that, that we, we have, make a finding that the roof, it, it isn't in fact not above the roofline. It's integrated with the architecture of the roofline, which includes a very vertical tower-like element. Yeah, I mean, you know
In the old, old design guidelines, they say Kentland Cinema, which is
You're basically owning the old guideline for the movie theater sign, but it ends up happening there. So
But in a much more subtle way.
Uh, do we need to make a motion that says they're allowing that?
No, we would just all recommend removing the condition then.
Okay.
It would be approval with one condition.
Right, okay. Which is condition number two formally.
Now, number one.
And is there anything about, um, the discussion on the graphics themselves and what, what constitutes guideline versus a final and formal approval of the sign itself? Or we, do we care about how that gets accomplished, or?
I think, I think what you've said and will have, it's summarized in the minutes as part of the discussion
Okay.
To direct staff to
Now, obviously, if staff feels they have to come back, then they have to come back, but, you know.
Okay. Yeah, they put Old Town on the side of that or something.
Visit Old Town this way.
Now we're talking. Okay.
There's funkiness in Old Town.
All right, any other clarifications?
No, I just, I, I just appreciate and respect, um, staff trying to, you know, follow the, this, the, the letter of the, of the guidelines and, and, and keep us honest. So I, I appreciate all of your hard work.
I think you articulated staff's feeling about, uh, why we made that decision.
Yeah, okay.
Good, thank you. All right, anything else? All right, if not, um, so Ray, please, just so we do it in order, read the recommendation if you would.
Uh, staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, grant AFP seven-five-nine-one two thousand seventeen Market Square signed package, finding it in compliance with twenty-four dash one-seventy and twenty-four dash one-seventy-two A of the city code with now one condition.
Correct.
Any questions?
Do you want to read that condition so we're clear, because there are formally two, and that way we know which one it was?
Right.
Yep. Uh, planning commission must review and approve proposed permanent identification signs at the corner of Kentlands Boulevard and Market Street, as well as a sign located at the entrance to the pass-through from Market Street prior to the issuance of a signed permit.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that, based on the exhibits submitted and the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendations, we grant AFP seven-five-nine-one dash two thousand seventeen, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash one-seventy and twenty-four dash one-seventy-two A of the city code with the one condition is read to the record.
And I offer an enthusiastic second.
Well, the gentleman from All right. Uh, thank you. It's moved to the second all, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, thanks very much. Um, not on the application or on the record tonight, but what is the current status of the project? Is there?
So we're in for both demolition and building permits right now, and they're under, um, during, we've gotten, um, I think the one to two rounds of comments from, uh,
Okay, good.
From staff.
Great to know. Thank you very much. And thanks for your patience and I have a longer than normal agenda, timing.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. Um, so now from the commission, uh, Phil, may I start with you?
I've got nothing.
And Rizali, if you'd like to rejoin us?
Nothing.
Lloyd, nothing?
I just said, I always have something, so
Okay.
That's just, that's just the way I am.
Sharing to the gods.
Right, exactly. Um, I, it's, we have some really exciting projects going on in the city, and I was, I just happened to be over. My wife and I had lunch over at, uh, Red Lobster, and I, I took a, I took a picture of the, of the auto, auto, you know, the thing at Carvana. And it's just so exciting to see that going up and, and all these nice things that are here in, in the city that are unique. Yeah, the freefall.
Our two-seventy quarter.
Right, right. It's just so, it is so exciting to see all the great things. It is so exciting to see all the great things that are happening in, in the city of Gaithersburg. And, a, a, as you all well know, I'm the, I'm the, um, secretary and now vice president of the MPCA. And, and we'd like to, and I, I need to share this with, um, with Trudy and, and staff, but we'd like to have our, um, annual conference here in the city, so I need to talk to you about that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so I need to talk to you a little later about that, but it's, Gaithersburg is, is, has always been a destination and continues to be a destination, a very unique and exciting destination, and I'm so proud to be a part of this process.
Excellent.
It makes me want to cry.
And if you, if anybody's watching, which, you know, there's Danny's referencing the state organization for planning commissioners among all of the different jurisdictions and municipalities that get together and share, share learnings and, um, um, you know, increase the professional level of planning on the state. So, thanks for doing that.
Sure.
Matt?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
All right. Um, I just want to bring up two quick things, um, and this is more for staff than anything. I know there's some buzz out there about, um, some state-level legislation that's in play for cell towers, and I know the city is taking a position on that, um, advocating
Yes.
at some level, oh, Frank, please.
Sure, uh, actually, there's a cross-file in both the House and the Senate. The Senate bill is bill number eleven eighty-eight. I can't remember right offhand the House, um, the House, uh, bill number, but the Senate, it's the Senate Finance Committee, and actually proposed by the Senate Finance Committee Chair, Mac Middleton, um, who's actually not known as anybody who hasn't worked with local government, and he generally does very well. In any event, uh, the hearing before the Senate Finance Committee is set for March the thirtieth. Um, and certainly, um, you know, there the bill is a, an industry bill per its description by those who are supporting it.
And so, real quick, the essence of the bill is to
Is to essentially limit, uh, the local ability to control anything related to, uh, small cells in the right-of-way. Uh, which, um, many of the concerns that the community expressed with the original proposal that Crown Castle, um, who, who's been working with us since that time, but this is going back a couple of years, which led the city to looking into this and bringing in outside counsel, that proposal would probably be able to proceed without us having much to say about it at all. So, the city's approach here, having, seeing that this could end up being a priority, is to encourage, uh, any residents who would have a concern to join in. Uh, March twentieth, uh, at the Senate Finance Committee in Annapolis, uh, is really an opportunity, uh, for residents to speak. This is, by the way, uh, these are elected officials, and this is an election year coming up. Um, and, uh, I think they may, having, in Annapolis, you don't necessarily always hear the raw information as to what people in the communities think. We didn't necessarily hear in the city either, and certainly people came out and let us know what they were thinking about their concerns for the front of, front of their houses. Perhaps they need to hear this in the Senate and the House as well.
And to be clear, the bill does not address cell towers directly. What it's talking about is how much control the local jurisdiction has over regulating the placement. And, and it would take a lot of that, a lot of that authority away from the city of Gaithersburg and put it in, at the state level or some by right level.
Simply say it's basically a right.
We just have to approve it, it's a right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's basically allowed by the zoning, uh, which we don't even apply zoning to right-of-way, but it would be permitted and we would have very little ability at all. There are also restrictions on fees. There are also restrictions on fees as well. So, uh, it go, it goes a little bit even beyond
Oh, so we touch the revenue side of it?
Yes, indeed, yes, indeed.
All right, well, thanks for that update. Dennis, did you?
Actually, you know, I'm not trying to relive my youth here, waiting for the end of the commission meeting, but, um, we are, actually, I'm here to ask whether we could get one of the planning commissioners to actually testify on the twentieth. Um, one of the primary concerns we have, not only with the fact that it's basically making small cell facilities a use right uh, within the right-of-way, because again, Gaithersburg doesn't apply zoning to the right-of-way.
Right.
There are a number of jurisdictions such as Montgomery County, which does. It basically preempts the right of anybody who has zoning in the right-of-way um, to basically say you can't do that anymore. It's a right by law that you could put a fifty-foot tower in front of someone's house and a three-by-three-by-three-by box, twenty-eight cubic feet.
And to be clear And not to interrupt, it goes up to fifty feet by the terminology in the bill.
And the right-of-way could in fact belong, belong to the local municipality, but it would still be open to this
Correct.
this allowance.
Yes, it would preempt our rights, and we're a little bit concerned that this is really preempting zoning rights in addition to right-of-way rights, um, because it hasn't happened here before in Maryland that the state has preempted a zoning aspect. So, we're trying to develop a panel where we have residents, um, but we also thought it would be helpful if we had someone from the planning commission
Sure.
to come and talk and say, and again, you know, these hearings aren't very long, you have to wait a long time often to actually testify, but you have roughly three minutes, and staff would help you draft your comments. Really, for more of the perspective of, this is really a preemption of the public process that comes along with, um, planning commission and zoning. That's one of the key elements of zoning, is really the public process. You know, tonight, you allow the public to comment, those would all go away under this state law.
Somebody suggested, I think there's interest, but maybe, um, we could do that offline, an email threat or something, and see who's interested, maybe how we might, we might participate in that. So, it's not to put anybody on the spot tonight.
No, I, I just
I think it's a great idea.
That's why I'm kind of sticking around to see if I can get somebody to step up to it.
Thanks, Dennis, appreciate it. All right, um, great, thank you, so thank for that.
Thank you.
Seems like it was a timely, timely thing. And then one other quick question, um, uh, where, where are we in the steps on the master plan updates now? I know Rob's not here, but, um
Um, the, um, historic preservation element will be coming back to you, um, next month for a recommendation.
And then what's, what's up next, or how's, how's it playing out with?
So, next it's gonna be going back to the historic district commission, um, for a formal recommendation on the element, and then back to you for your recommendation, and then from there to the council.
And then the next element's gonna be the Parks, Parks and Recreation, or is it gonna be?
Um, we are still, uh, waiting for Parks and Recreation to get information. They have, they have not finished, um, their portion, and they actually moved it to the twenty nineteen, FY twenty nineteen schedule for them.
Are we gonna move some other element?
We, we're looking at doing a housing study, um, uh, during the planning commi, or, I'm sorry, the mayor and council's retreat. One of the issues that was brought up was looking at the housing policy, which has not been looked at since the late nineteen nineties.
Okay.
Um, so, we would like to have a housing study completed before we'll do the transportation and land use.[1714.84]